Okay, I just want to remind everybody that, you know, because we're recording, just to please keep your, you keep everything muted for the sake of anybody that would need to hear this meeting later so that they don't have any, you know, disruptions or they don't, or they missed something that's important. We have three experts on tonight and we want to make sure that anybody who's been a victim of domestic violence or, you know, or child abuse, they have an option to get the help that they need. So I'm gonna start this meeting. I want to first welcome and thank very much Senator Michelle Henchy and congratulate her to, to her office, so we could all, you know, thank her for that. And Chief of Staff Leah, is it Goldman?
Yes.
Goldman.
Yes, Goldman.
Okay, and thank you so much for having this, this meeting for us. We have over 49 families, however, we obviously weren't going to bring that many families in here tonight or we, it would just become overwhelming. So first I would just like to, if, Alana, if you could just make that a little bit bigger for me so I can read, we can explain what this whole meeting is for. And we also want to thank, special thanks to Derek Gibson, who is sponsoring, co-sponsoring this. He is the gubernatorial candidate, Derek Gibson. We thank you very much. We thank all three of you for, you know, for doing this. I want to say one thing about Senator Michelle Henchy before we even begin. We have, we have contacted many people, which I'm sure in the testimonies tonight, that's going to come out. And she literally, your office literally responded within 24 hours. And your office actually, not only did you respond, but you set up a meeting almost instantly. And so, you know, women and children in the state of New York are grateful, so grateful for what your office has already done and she just began. So that is a true blessing to us, okay? So let me go ahead and I'm gonna read, I just want to like, again, thank the three of you for being here and all the victims and the experts that we have here tonight. The New York State Judicial Reinvention Committee is grassroots. And it's here to protect women and children who are victims of domestic violence and child abuse from family court abuses. And we are going to show you during this session tonight, how many rights are violated by New York State family courts. The members of the nonprofit has been meeting for years and currently, I'm gonna have you kind of just move that up for me, Alana, if you could. I'm having a hard time reading that, sorry. There we go, that's much better, thank you. Oh, it was good. Little bit bigger on that. Okay, I think, I think it's, that's good, thank you. Okay, so the members of this, of the nonprofit, which would be my nonprofit, Punished for Protecting Incorporated, which is a 501(c)(4) registered here in the state of New York, we've been meeting for years and currently, we've been meeting weekly, organizing and gathering necessary information and has developed a plan that reflects the needs of the community and is working to identify improvement opportunities. The committee will hold public sessions over this year, 20, well, 2021, to hear the public's concerns regarding trust, fairness, and legitimacy as it relates to family courts. If you can just move that up, please. Today's session has been collecting evidence since 2013 that goes back two decades. Ulster County Family Court is on today's agenda. Judge Anthony McGinty is the judge that we're emphasizing. He is the administrative judge of Ulster County Family Court. And so I just want to just remind everybody that because it's recorded, just to keep your mute on and we can kind of move up past that, we already discussed it before Leah Goldman came into the, to the Zoom tonight. So if you can kind of scroll that part up, that would be okay. Past the, there we go. Notice for attendees. Thank you. And then if you can make that a little bit bigger. Now I have a list of the experts who are here tonight and then the victims who are a part of the committee. So it would be myself, I'm Francesca Amato, I'm the head chair. And then we have Alana Orr, and she's going to read the New York State Constitution and Demands and Solutions. We have Derek Gibson again, and he's going to read the Injuries and the Solutions. So before I even do that, if you can scroll down, I'm gonna go ahead and I'm going to read, and then I'm gonna pass it over to Derek Gibson to read, and then I'll go back to the victims and so on on the list. So basically, we're doing this as a public warning. And we strongly feel, and this is literally a vote from everyone, that Anthony McGinty, who's the administrative judge of Ulster County Family Court, is a health and safety risk to our community and our families. We reserve the right to warn the public and a protected class of domestic violence and child abuse victims of the following. He executes an alarming pattern of abuse and gender bias against women and children who are already victims of domestic violence and child abuse. We are upstanding individuals with no history of violence and child abuse. I'm sorry, because I have to like, I'm trying to read this and it's like, it's a little bit small. That does help a little bit for me. We, uh, thank you. We are standing individuals, oh, it's blurry. With no history of violence or any type of crimes, that's what I was supposed to say. Demands to remedy, we're gonna talk about that in the Constitution of New York State. How to resolve these issues? The resolution is in the public interest, or abuse will continue if it's not resolved? The ACE Study, Adverse Childhood Experiences, American Disability Act violations? He is a threat to public health and safety. Our children are still in danger and we need your help to protect them from further danger. Children are being interrogated. Are we getting a blur, oh, sorry. Are we getting a blur on that? Okay. Children are being interrogated without independent witnesses or support. We are being abused by Anthony McGinty, denying or suppressing evidence. No speedy pre-trial proceedings. 1.5 years before trial commences. Keeping evidence of abuse off the record. Obstructing justice. Denying witnesses. Conclusively coercing and silencing litigants. Granting full physical custody to abusive fathers. Ex parte communications. Misrepresenting the children's best interest. Anthony McGinty is shirking his responsibility and stewarding and thereby manipulating law enforcement and medical professionals and authority that in essence denies protection for victims, causing reckless and further abuse to victims. The mothers who try to flee further violence are arrested or threatened with arrest. The orders are unnatural and impossible to follow. They are cruel, inhumane. Example, removing medical decision-making power when by doing so further empowers abusers to molest, physically and emotionally harm children with no third-party out-of-court evidence. This ties the hands of law enforcement and medical professionals. The children's voices are never heard. The AFCs, which would be the attorneys for children, don't speak on their behalf and the abusers are empowered to continue their abuse. We also want to say, as Alana's moving that up, that we are in full support of fathers that are, you know, safe fathers. We're not anti-fathers in any way, shape, or form, and we never want to make that, you know, anybody in the public think that. These are specifically, we're gonna be able to present to the senator, literally 13, 14, 15, and 20-page criminal histories on these men. And also that each mother doesn't even have any type of history at all. There's been collusion between judges and the AFCs and the attorneys, court-affiliated service providers, psych evaluators, therapists, domestic violence shelters, et cetera. There's coercing by way of threat, mothers and children to testify against themselves, and we're gonna test, all these people that are testifying tonight can, can show you that, which could incriminate them, threatening mother to lie on the stand, or the children to lie on the stand. Attorneys falsely accuse protective mothers of coaching the children. When the children disclose sexual, physical, or emotional abuse, attorneys coach their clients to stay silent about abuse. AFCs acts in the favor of the judge's interest rather than the child's interest. His treatment to women and children is cruel and inhumane. His behavior and character while on the bench has exhibited extreme highs and lows. Severe anger and threats. Severe punishment of victims. Sarcasm and bullying. He's been witnessed nodding out. He doesn't read the cases, motions, or evidence. Therefore, he does not exercise due diligence at the expense of children's welfare or best interest. We are afraid, this is, this has been across the board. We are afraid to file anymore in violation of our legal rights because of the continual legal abuse and repeated denial of our testimony and evidence of abuse. And retaliation of the power that is held by Anthony McGinty over every other facet of the legal system. No jury, no defense, no legitimate trial, an semblance of court, but not an actual judicial ethical court hearing or trial. We are victims who have been treated like criminals while the abusers are treated like victims. Anthony McGinty has a clear pattern against women and children. Anthony McGinty refuses to recuse from cases with an arrogance, despite the fact that victims will not receive a fair trial in violation of their human rights, especially with high-profile public figures or advocates, that he has proven, that he has a proven track record of abusing. Despite clean backgrounds, parental rights that are non-negotiable, non-negotiable, and rights of victims, whether a judge's impartiality might reasonably be questioned is necessarily a question of fact in each case. Even if the judge believes that he or she can be impartial, the judge should recuse himself or herself if an objective, disinterested observer could reasonably question the judge's impartiality, and that's the state of New York. So I speak on, on my behalf because I'm a very large public figure who's wrote a book about him, and he has refused to recuse, and he has repeatedly damaged me and my child. The purpose of this, I believe, is this, is this where I'm turning it over to Derek Gibson? I'm trying to remember if this is where I turn it over to Derek Gibson to read, or, well, let me go ahead in the meantime, and then I'll wait for Derek to, to speak up. The purpose is we demand a fair emergency trial with an unbiased judge overruling these orders and holding Anthony McGinty accountable, accountable for damages, included but not limited to the officers of the court, i.e. the children attorneys, and a removal of Ulster County Family Court Judge Anthony McGinty. So we want him impeached, and we want to go through the process, and if you can scroll up. We want to hold Anthony McGinty accountable for violating our human rights, it's kind of blurry, so I'll wait for it to clear up, and his oath of office, federal and state laws. We want Anthony McGinty subpoenaed to a public meeting to answer to the years of victims he has directly harmed. He has played a critical role, critical and active role in endangering child welfare. And as an administrative judge of Ulster County Family Court, he has maneuvered all court officers and lesser judges to operate in the same spirit. He and the officers of the court he controls must be held accountable for failure to protect the most vulnerable, our children and victims of violence. Removing all mothers from their children and children from their mothers, he's given all abusive fathers sole custody. And the Constitution of the State of New York, Article 6, Judiciary, Section 23, Removal of Judges. So I'm gonna go ahead at this point and have Alana Orr, if she could go ahead and read that, Sections, you know, 23, and I believe it's 24, if you don't mind.
Okay, so the Constitution of the State of New York, Article 6, Judiciary, Section 23, Removal of Judges. The applicable statute is in reference to judges of the family court, Section 23b. So the, the judges of the family court may be removed by the Senate on the recommendation of the governor if two-thirds of all the members elected to the Senate concur therein. So that's, that's what's applying here, and that's part of the reason we're applying to Senator Henchy to get this underway. Alternatively, there is Section 24, Court for Trial of Impeachments of Judgment. I'll just go ahead and read. "The Assembly shall have the power of impeachment by a vote of a majority of all the members elected thereto. The Court for the Trial of Impeachments shall be composed of the President of the Senate, the senators, or the major part of them, and the judges of the Court of Appeals, or the major part of them. On the trial of, I don't think this applies, but on the trial of an impeachment against the governor or lieutenant governor, neither the lieutenant governor nor the temporary president of the Senate shall act as a member of the court. This applies. No judicial officer shall exercise his or her office after articles of impeachment against him or her shall have been referred to the Senate until he or she have been acquitted. Before the trial of an impeachment, the members of the court shall take an oath or affirmation truly and impartially to try the impeachment according to the evidence, and no person shall be convicted without the concurrence of two-thirds of the members present. Judgment in cases of impeachment shall not extend further than to removal from office or removal from office and disqualification to hold and enjoy any public office of honor, trust, or profit under the state. But the party impeached shall be liable to indictment and punishment according to the law." So we are looking for removal or impeachment of judges.
Of judgment, yeah. Okay, and then if we can go to the section for Derek Gibson. I believe there's stars on that portion before we get into the testimonials. So where would that be? That would be, go up, I think, after.
Facts.
Was it? Okay, was it past, was it with facts?
We left off at facts, but we can.
Oh, okay. So I can, I can, let me, I can do a couple more of the, the finishing of the facts, and then I believe then it's the next section that would be for Mr. Derek Gibson. So did I, what did I leave off? It said abusive fathers are well documented. That needs to just be a little clearer for me there. Oh, here we go, okay. So it says victims were never found unfit and abusers were never found fit. And yet victims lost their children completely, which is absurd. Victims are well documented, well documented as such. Abusive fathers are well documented as such via New York State convictions, arrests, probation, parole, and POs. Let me, let me not skip this part. Miscommunication among the authorities. Lack of professionalism without proper education and training. Evidence was not acknowledged. Our equal protection under the law has been violated by Judge McGinty. We are unwed mothers, so they're either divorced or unwed mothers, women who reported domestic violence, child abuse to the authorities. Victims are denied rights to our children with no due process. Many were ordered to pay child support to the abusers. Child support paid by victims who are disabled or on temporary assistance. The children are exposed to ongoing abuse and left invulnerable and, I'm just waiting for it to not be blurry. And not believed. Further tormented. Mothers are restrained from protecting them or raising them in a continual healthy environment that children need. Children learn to suppress their needs. Children learn to suppress their needs is blurry. Children learn to suppress their needs, wants, and fundamental rights because Anthony McGinty has abused his position for, of power for years. He has intentionally inflicted harm and severe punishment upon victims. None of the victims' evidence, okay, I'm sorry, it's hard to, give me one second. Okay, sorry about that. None of the victims' evidence or victims' witnesses are admitted into court. He always finds a loophole to stop that. Not properly subpoenaed. He and his officers of the court find loopholes to deny non-negotiable family fundamental rights and then twist the record or redacts evidence that would protect the innocent. He must be immediately stopped as he is a danger to the Ulster and Sullivan Counties' most vulnerable women and children. Transcripts do not accurately reflect what happens in court. Are sometimes not provided to litigants when requested. Sometimes require fees to indigent, indigent litigants. So those are just, just, you know, some of the things that we've established over the years of him. And again, I mean, as this is clearing up, because it's blurry and I need to read it, we have over 49 families, we have several testifying tonight. Of course, we couldn't fit them all in here, we would have chaos. So we had to make this as clear as possible as we present this and as we make our proposals for impeachment and further, because we do want, we want these handled as crimes, because they are crimes, and we can prove that. There's been ongoing crime, and you'll see it in the testimonies tonight. Unbiased and highly accredited service providers are blocked by the court to discredit, you have to forgive me, because people are writing and it's hard to, to see, reports of family offenses and neglect. They are replaced by less accredited and even like new people that don't have any background, those who do not have legal rights to file into the court in order to obstruct evidence. When victims appeal cases, Anthony McGinty has so manipulated the cases, it seldom wins when they would be winnable appeals, because he's pre-med, he's pre-affected these cases in the lower court. Prolonged pre-trial litigation deny a speedy trial for victims who report abuse, which is then used against the victims. So no speedy trial. All of the victims' reported evidence is dismissed by the time trial begins. Case is already pre-decided behind closed doors. And I can testify to that because I actually knew cases beforehand by hearing them in the court years ago, and I spoke to Assemblyman Frank Scartatos in detail about that, because I worked with him for years. And I put it in writing long before the outcomes, so I can testify firsthand witness under perjury, penalty of perjury, and I will do it. Reported evidence is dismissed by the time it happens, case is already pre-decided. Convicted abusers are accommodated while victims are harmed, even buying suits for abusive fathers. So they're, they're literally buying suits now for abusive fathers, present while in court against victims. The court perpetuates and perpetuates psychological abuse against victimized and children. A pattern of purposeful court dates on significant dates, being called into court on birthdays and harassed on holidays, being limited to seeing children on their birthdays. So you're not going into court on, obviously, on a holiday, but they'll, he'll purposely use this very important precious times like birthdays and Christmas to harm you further by his orders. His orders are so abusive that the abuser looks like a piece of cake, that's how abusive his orders are. I do, I do want to also state before I read some more, because it gets blurry every once in a while, and I just had a thought, that, you know, what we're doing with the New York State Judicial Reinvention Committee, which we're proposing to have the senator put as a executive order for the state of New York, is that we're doing this throughout the entire state of New York to help women and children stop suffering this insane abuse by family court judges. We just happen to have a large amount of victims that came forward and are ready to speak against Anthony McGinty. But the same is gonna follow suit with other judges within the state of New York. Anthony McGinty has mastered the art of manipulating and manipulated the system to not be held accountable, citing judicial immunity despite ethics and oath violations that are not protected under judicial immunity. He curtailing our rights. Child attorneys have quasi-judicial immunity. Biased collude, biased collude with judges because they want to stay in the judge's favor in order to be reassigned to the next case. We are always referred by public agencies to a different agency. Nobody wants to help. Children are kept in the system, creating customers for life. Intergenerational trauma and abuse to perpetrate continual family court clientele and perpetuate corrupt power structures. We've exhausted our remedies, higher courts, police, CPS, human rights, school, medical professionals, bias, psychological services. And I do want to say that we have massive investigations going on now for the first time all over. So we do have that, we have finally successfully gotten to that point, it took us years. So we have some main points here, and I'm turning the reading over now to Derek Gibson. Thank you so much, Derek, for reading that down.
Thank you, and I want to say good evening to all the ladies attending today. I am here to listen. It's past time that someone take time out to listen to the women today. I feel like your voices are not being heard, so I'm here to do just that, to sit here and listen, not to do too much talking. I will be reading off the main points. I am with you, I understand you. I've been a single dad also myself, and been through a lot, so I can kind of side with you a little bit here, but I'm here to hear the points that you're making. I have had countless women throughout the state of New York while campaigning have been approaching me about CPS and how their rights have been violated through the court system. I looked into about four or five cases personally myself, and I can see abuse that was made, and it's still going on until today. But I won't take up too much of your time, I want to hear what the young ladies have to say. But the main points I'm reading off today are procedural due process violation, human rights violation, the no fair treatment under the law for these women that is going through, these cases getting their kids taken away from them. These women are treated like disadvantaged class, victimized protective mothers who respond to abuse to authorities in an attempt to protect their children from further abuse. And that's something we all should be able to understand and relate to, as you all are maternal mothers, and a mother's instinct is to protect their child from inner danger that they sense, and this should be taken into account by all judges, all law enforcement officers. It's something that has to be done. The current court system is not doing that for the women that kids have been taken away from and given to the father. Not saying fathers are bad, because I'm a father myself, like I said from the beginning, I raised my kids as a single dad. So we must move and start listening and not have one or two individuals making a decision that would affect a lifetime of the mother and a child. Punishing and silencing mothers is a thing that is going on, and the children, failure to protect, it's neglect to protect their crimes, injury to their person, property, and business, overall psychological function. I'm sure you can relate to me on that, many of you. So I'm just here to get this, to get this done and listen and signal you something about, not only sit here and listen, but I want to actually look into every case that comes before me, I get to read and make a decision on it based on that, and we can send it to the appropriate people to have something done about it. So what we do want to do, the main points are to demand restoration of the rights to the mothers and the fathers also, if it's find that the father is, is not in violation. So we, we need to, your system is very blurry.
Yeah, I was gonna say, if you can clear that up so you can see that part a little clearer.
Let me go here.
There you go.
Yes, I'm down to.
No support system.
Yeah. Getting no support system available to support the conflict of interests. They have no recourse, no oversight of accountability. Like I was saying, we must have oversight of judges and decisions that's being made in these families. No oversight of accountability due to immunity, which we need to take a hard look at. Official policies violating, is violating federal protective rights. We demand for restoration of rights. The cruelest form of abuse is when the orders, when the judge orders Anthony McGinnis protective mothers to turn their children over to their abusive other parent. He shows no remorse for compassion and offers no recourse for healing. These are the things that I've heard. I haven't seen it for myself, but I've heard, just now I've looked at some of the cases. He orders five and 15-minute delay, daily or weekly phone calls between a mother He orders five and fifteen minute delay daily or weekly phone calls between a mother and her child, which makes absolutely, it's, it's nonsense. Uh, who has consistent loving bond at the place and with them the abuse when they needed maternal communication that is very important for, for every child. Criminals get longer phone time than the mother gets. And uh limited mothers to breadcrumbs is not acceptable at all. withholding educational or medical rights without a trial or finding to remove these rights. Some have no findings that are supervised. Some get zero limit visits. I personally know one that gets zero limit visit. It makes absolutely no sense having been convicted of anything but been accused. But the child has been taken away from the mother. The mother don't have a right to contact them by phone. The mother don't have a right to see these kids. I personally know uh, uh this person that is going through that at, at the moment. It makes no sense because she hasn't been convicted of anything. So she should at least have, you know, supervised visit uh in my opinion and in the opinion of the law uh itself. So despite evidence of abuse includes sexual, sexual, sex, sexual, the fathers are getting hours of access to children and eventually sold custody. And that's destroying a family kid needs the maternal mother and the father if it's not an abusive situation towards uh the child and they are in no danger. That's my opinion. And why these stories are relevant? We don't want this to continue happening to our children. Families with feelings abused, we want to break the pattern and the cycle. Judicial abuse by Mr. Anthony McGinnon that has been reported uh to me and what I've heard. Uh, we need to prevent the cycle of abuse of the families with his orders. Actually bring years of harm to future generation. We need to raise awareness to help remedy the problem in the current system to protect the victim from further abuse. Children's rights, hold the judges and the AFC's accountable. CPS, police, family. Woodstock-based court appointed court affiliates and service providers. Uh, that's why we need uh civilian, we need civilian. We need some civilian oversight of CPS if not completely removed. Uh, and establish something that's removing government out of the families destroying families.
That's right.
So what we would like to do is hold public services accountable. Establish oversight and accountability to what I was just saying. Have people recognize that this is happening to people who report domestic violence to the authorities. Investigate the monetary uh state matching funds titled uh five, four D. For child support payments and frozen bank accounts and other penalties for non-payment of child support beyond uh their means. Jury trials, the right to waive uh is violated by the very choice removed from court. Equal protection unlawful victim is very important and their rights are being denied under this judge. Monetary incentives to protect victims mandatory, mandatory assistance, trauma training and education for all offices of the court. Injury lawsuits and we need to pass the Safe Child Act. That is number one at the top of my list as a gubernatorial candidate. That's why I want to protect these children. So we, we, we proposing these things and not only are we proposing, but I will fight to get these things enacted and bring uh CPS back under control of community and civilians. That is what I would like uh done. And uh I would like no child separated on the basis of one-sided story. I know uh people have not been allowed to tell their side of the story. Mothers flee with their kids because they feel the father is going to abuse them. That is maternal and I, I, I don't. I sympathize with a mother because a mother would do whatever it takes to protect her children. So I sympathize for that. I am with you. Long as no abuse is going on from the mother, no criminal activity, drugs or whatever. The mother should be allowed to keep that child in their, in their home until we get a fair uh trial uh going on and find out what is happening. The judge should make a decision. So I'm going to turn it back over uh to Francesca and uh.
Thank you so much.
Thank God I'm here today to listen to this and you have my ears, you have my concerns and you also can reach out to me and I will help you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. So going back, thank you so much for reading that. And going back to the, the list, um, we're going to go over uh the victims and one of the other proposals that we have um is um to turn the New York State Judicial Reinvention Committee into an executive order. Um, we just want to let you know that we're very grateful to Derek Gibson because he has, we, you know, as, as, and I know just from other campaigns that he was on and involved in. Uh, all the women that I spoke to that were going through the same thing. Of course, the Thomas Valva murder, the Mason de Cosmo murder. The, you know, the, the on and on murders of children because family court judges on, on a whole are placing them with abusers and ignoring the abuse. And then I've seen so many mothers completely with zero backgrounds, clean backgrounds, professional backgrounds, non-drug using backgrounds. And, and their children are in the hands of an abuser and, you know, and, and, and these judges don't even blink an eye at that. They just keep covering up. And McGinty is one of them, obviously. So if we can go back to that screen sharing, please, um, so I can follow the order of the experts now that are going to testify. I do believe the very first um person to testify will be um license, uh LCSWR Jillian Gordon. ACE Research Psychiatric Injury and Trauma Specialist and Expert. Uh, if we can turn it over to Jillian, please.
Yes, hi everybody. Jillian here. I'm wearing my mask now because I have so good. Very good because I'm missing my two front teeth and I'm embarrassed. So I'm sorry that I'm wearing this stupid thing, but you don't want to see my teeth. Anyway. I'm a psychotherapist.
She just said dental surgery.
So my. Yeah, so, so I went to Columbia and I graduated in ninety-eight and I worked in South Bronx for about twelve years. Then I went into private practice upstate in the Hudson Valley in about ten years ago. And I was really, I, I was shocked by what I encountered when I walked into the family court system here in Ulster County because it is a completely different system than the one in the city of New York. Um, that being said, because I was a Columbia grad, I was extremely impressed about systems. And systems theory is one of the big things that we learn about at Columbia. While I'm a clinician, I tend to affect change through the back door or through the mental health kind of window. And I do that by offering eye movement desensitization and reprocessing to victims of domestic violence and sexual assault, sexual abuse and other crimes which involve panic and fear and anxiety. So I actually am on the front lines with the New York State City Alliance Against Sexual Assault. And have involved myself with rape crisis and the sexual abuse of children my entire career of twenty-five years. So having been in private practice up here, a number of my patients and former patients are on this coalition. And I can tell you that my own records by law, which are supposed to be submitted to the family court by subpoena, are kept out of court. And when, when my victims talk about their due process rights being violated. I can tell you that as a professional here in Ulster County, my due process rights are being violated as well. And when you take an LCSW who has absolutely no power to affect any kind of change within a family system that they've been working with for years. That's a problem. The family court cannot exist on its own. And attorneys and I'm sorry to say it, politicians and attorneys do not have a handle on mental health. In the same way that mental health providers do. So we as mental health providers like to inform the court as to how they can best serve and protect our families. And when you're talking about child victims, I see a very broken system here in Ulster County, New York. Involving reports of abuse, not being properly investigated. Involving police officers actually engaging in similar gender and racial bias when intervening in family dynamics. And I think that Anthony McGinty's bias is more than apparent. Not only in terms of his bias towards women and victims or children or helpless people in general. But also in a racial way because I have never not once seen any Caucasian or African-American individual in the domestic violence court in Ulster County, which tells me I wonder why this man thinks that only violence exists in certain communities and not others. Because domestic violence takes place across the board regardless of race, culture or class. So, oh, and gender. So I also have a lot of protective fathers who are also being abused by the family court. So I don't want to say that it's entirely a gender issue. But what I see happening with my females is much worse than I do with my males in family court. And I see protective mothers completely dislike, they're completely disconnected from their offspring. And their children are treated as if they are property, being bought and sold and traded up in a family court environment. And I can't tell you what that does. Just, I got a disclosure just last week from one of the victims that will be talking to you both tonight. And her daughter was interviewed behind an outdoor structure of some kind about her father sexually abusing her. And when you have officers of the law completely disregarding mental health workers in the community and interviewing little girls and warning their fathers not to touch them or else they're going to get in trouble. There's something really going wrong here in Ulster County. For ten years I've been watching it. I do know how the New York State Family Court is supposed to work and it is not working in Ulster County, New York. Thank you.
Okay, so now I'm going to call, um, if you can pull the list up for me. Thank you. Thank you, Jillian. And for those that were asking, again, that was Jillian Gordon. I saw people asking. She is a LCSWR. ACE Research Psychiatric Injury Expert. Um, I can't read the rest because it's blocking me. Specialist. Um, next I'm going to call Victoria Griffin. She is a LMSW Licensed New York State Social Worker, Retired New York City Police Officer. She's going to discuss violations of ADA American Disability Act Title II as an expert and also with regards to Anthony McGinty.
Hi everyone. Thank you Fran. I, okay, I um am approaching this from a perspective of Title II of the ADA. Although it really does encompass the due process constitutional violations, uh, public policy, civil liberty violations that uh the, this Ulster County Family Court and this particular judge are all violating. Um, I, uh, my background is, again, I'm a retired New York City Police Officer. Um, I became a stay-at-home mother. Uh, I was able to do that for a number of years. I have two children. And then when I filed for divorce, I realized that the matrimonial court system was broken. I met many, many women um in the family court system, the matrimonial court system. And I realized how broken it was in Nassau County, Queens County and Suffolk. And then when I became um an advocate for um the ADA, I became familiar with the Ulster County Family Court. And I saw what was happening up there. And the reason why I want to um educate everyone on Title II of the ADA is because we know that no judge, a family court, in, in any judge is allowed to break the law when they issue an order. And because of the, the way their New York State law is set up with the domestic violence being uh physical egregious violence that shocks the conscience. Where they have policies, practices and procedures that Jillian just mentioned uh behind closed doors, uh they allow sexual abuse. I really believe uh that the way, one way to target this and to get results is that the judges are bound by the law to um enforce the ADA and not violate it in the context of family court orders. And that's exactly what this judge is doing. Um, the Americans Disability Act is a law, federal law that protects individuals with qualified disabilities which include conditions like anxiety, depression, PTSD. This judge is creating PTSD, anxiety, depression. Mothers are covered by the ADA and fathers are covered by ADA. Um, Title Two, one covers employment. Title Two covers public services. Now, the Department of Justice is, is uh in charge of enforcing the ADA and researching violations. Um, the problem is that the only way to get the DOJ involved is to file an online complaint. When I know many mothers have done that and they come back saying, we're not saying you don't have a case, but we're too busy to explore other avenues. Which means filing a federal lawsuit. Well, to file a federal lawsuit, you have to have an attorney. And most people don't have the, the, the money for, for an attorney. And then when you go to federal court, suddenly that drags on for years. But what I want to say is that the DOJ has this published online. It's protecting the rights of parents with disabilities um in courts and child welfare agencies under Title Two. And this states by the Department of Justice stating that a public service that the courts provide are custody hearings. Every order that a judge issues, every hearing a judge presides over has to comply with and not violate the ADA. And in this case, they are. So um one option would be through everyone uh contact the DOJ or even do a, a, a class action lawsuit. But that's, that's another issue for another day. Um, but the other thing is that everyone uh says that judges have immunity. Okay? Uh, there are, there are as much case law out there where um under the Title II. If a, 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 a public entity, which would be the family court, Ulster County Court or um a, a judge acting as New York State Court. If they, Title Two violation also results in a Fourteenth Amendment violation, the judge does not, is not protected by immunity. The court is not protected by immunity. If upon, it says here. Um, a plaintiff may even recover monetary damages upon a showing of a statutory violation of the ADA. Which is under uh twenty-eight CFR thirty-five point one three oh, resulting from deliberate indifference to the rights secured under the ADA. So this judge has shown deliberate indifference to the rights of mothers, of children. And uh if everyone uh goes to the ADA or the DOJ or maybe um um Mr. Gibson could go to the ADA because uh to the DOJ and, and let them know that they can file a lawsuit. The DOJ can against Ulster County Family Court, the New York State Unified Court System. This goes on Nassau County. It goes on Suffolk County as we saw from the Valva case. Um, and these orders of, of custody that are being given to men or to women, who are mostly men, I would say nineteen-eight percent of the time. They pose a direct threat to the safety of the child. And safety is, is not just physical, it's psychological, emotional. Um, and, and when a, a mother goes to court saying, I have PTSD and they, it's, it's not uh an, an opinion. That is a, a, a legal disability that makes the mother a protected class member who is supposed to uh have orders that do not violate the ADA. So.
Thank you.
If anyone could uh understand us on that perspective, that it violates the equal protection clause, it violates the ADA and the court system can lose funding. And this judge could be the, the, the phone off the bench just for that. But it, it, people don't even know that uh that exists. Now, the New York State Unified Court System, which includes Ulster County, has this on their website. It's the ADA, Americans with Disability Act and their compliance. Well, if you read this, and by the way, this, this was a result of, of some of my lawsuits. Um, because I just kept on saying, you're violating the ADA, you're violating the ADA. And finally they posted this. And it's strictly about physical accommodations or if you're during the lawsuit, you were during the hearing, you need a, a break. They're not saying that the, they're not complying with the fact that the orders are supposed to be compliant with the ADA rule of law and they're just not.
That's right.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, Vicki. Thank you very much. Okay, and um we're going to have a time for, we're going to have a time for Senator. for Senator Michelle Henchy's Chief of Staff Leah Goldman to ask questions at the end. We have now-
I'm so sorry. I have a hard stop at 6:30. I'm so sorry. I should have, I don't know what, how, I have another meeting right at 6:30. I know you have a few-
Okay, what time are we at right now?
6:25.
Okay, so I'm just going to go on to the next expert and then we'll have the people give the testimonies and we'll submit that to you. Not a problem.
Perfect, thank you.
Okay, so if we can have Evelyn Whitpey, and if you can scroll to the bottom for me, please, to the very bottom. So I can just read her credentials real quick. Should be on the very bottom. Evelyn Whitpey.
Title Education.
It says, "Education and learning consultants specializing in dyslexia, dysgraphia", and here's the one I have a hard time, dyscalculia. You can fix me on that one. She's a victims expert, I'm sorry, I believe there was more to that.
Dyslexia expert, yeah.
Okay, if you can go ahead, go ahead Evelyn, please.
Yes, I'm showing you right now a picture of, and I have permission to do all of this, of a student who's dyslexic. You can see that her name is Nai Hiri. And it goes like that. I just wanted to show, I also wanted to show you a picture. Hi, I'm Evelyn Whitpey. This is a picture of the spell of the brain and the neural networks. So I'm going to get a little scientific on you here because it's really important that our research gets translated into practice. And that will also include the types of things that you folks are really concerned about, and I am as well. I would like to let you know that I have a master's degree from Vanderbilt University. I'm a certified dyslexia practitioner. And I was also on the U.S. Congressional Ed Panel in 2018 discussing dyslexia and its effects on family functionality. Also locally, thank you all, Ulster County Legislature, for the memorializing resolution 418 regarding dyslexia. And then also, I was asked by the Commissioner of Special Education to be on the Dyslexia Legislative Forum. I have almost 40, over 40 years of experience teaching. And I also help craft legislation. I also want to thank the Assembly and the Senate for their support of the dyslexia legislation we have so far and the guidance. And also, I would ask you to also support the School to Prison Pipeline initiatives in terms of teaching teachers how to identify and deal with dyslexia, and also dyslexia screening. And we do have some prison types of things from Joanne Simon, Assemblywoman Joanne Simon, that went, you know, forward. And we do have current teacher training stuff that we would really like to see happen.
Give me one second, Evelyn, please, just one moment. Hold that thought. I just want to thank again Senator Michelle Henchy and Chief of Stat Leah Goldman. I know she has a hard leave right now. She will be presented your testimony and then the testimony of the victims. We're going to continue to go with the flow, but thank you so much for being here. And we are just, we will submit to you the entirety of this with our proposal to the executive order to the New York State Judicial Reinvention Committee and the other proposals for impeachment of Judge Anthony McGinty and the other proposals that are a part of this meeting. Thank you so much, Leah Goldman. Everybody, thank Leah.
Thank you so much for having me. And yes, I'll look out for all of that. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead Evelyn, you can continue.
I'd like to give a little background also. Forty percent of high school graduates are illiterate. And two-thirds of children that do not read proficiently by the end of fourth grade end up in jail or on welfare. So I'm here to talk about dyslexia and also the effects of stress on actually creating the characteristics of dyslexia in children that didn't have them previously. Helping children to learn is an upstream tactic to make both individuals and our communities better. And this study by the, in 2013, April, by the U.S. Department of Education and the National Institute of Literacy revealed that 32 million adults in the United States can't read. That's 14% of the population. 21% of adults in the United States are below the fifth grade level. Moreover, from the Department of Justice, the link between academic failure and delinquency, violence and crime is welded to reading failure. Statistics in the National Institutes of Health report that 85% of juveniles, these are kids, interface with the court system or functionally illiterate, 63% of prison inmates can't read. And from the National Institute on Literacy, they note that two-thirds of children that don't read proficiently by the end of fourth grade will end up in jail or on welfare. There are other statistics that indicate that children that don't read by the end of third grade, they start building prisons and counting prison beds, okay? For kids that can't read. Forty-three percent of adults at level one literacy live in poverty, where only 4% of those at level five do. Level five means you have had some kind of vocational education after high school. Okay, so these statistics are very disheartening. And we would much rather see our youth develop and become great participants in society, taxpayers, and people who have high self-esteem and confidence and not being beaten down by systems. Not literally, not literally. Okay, so, I have some asks here. The judicial system as well as other systems, and I'd like permission to share my PowerPoint real quick.
Alana, if you can transfer her to that.
Thank you, Alana.
Screen sharing.
I'm having the share screen.
You're with us for this brief moment.
So, I'm going to start with this statement here. "When the brain is changed by trauma responses to domestic violence or abuse, it can mirror symptoms and characteristics of dyslexia, thus in effect causing dyslexia." Now, dyslexics also are very important to our society because they are the problem solvers, those that get into entrepreneurship, invention, crafts, certainly all kinds of creative types of things, architecture and engineering, as well as politics and problem solving. They're the thinkers and extraordinary minds that invent all kinds of things that we use and see around us, that protect us and help us. Now getting into the effect of the domestic violence and child abuse on learning. What happens is that the, I'm going to jump down here. When abuse, you can't really see this because there's sign as in what, when the domestic abuse or child abuse. Boy, this is frustrating when you can't see.
Oh, I can read, I can read it. It says, "Are added to the formula".
"When abuse or domestic violence are added to the formula below, it deprives a child of a chance at foundational literacy and a right to a basic minimum education, which the court has defined in Detroit as giving children the opportunity to learn to read, six, US Corporate Circuit Court of Appeals." Over here, you can see the cycle of causation in this box. Now, what happens is that when a child starts failing or, and is exacerbated or magnified by being abused, it actually shuts the brain's ability down to learn new information, to recall information, to process information. And when this type of failure starts at home, in the relationships at home, it starts to affect the brain also. You have failure, anxiety, effort, failure, and this cycle feeds upon itself. And you have failure, and then you have cognitive dissonance, you have, you know, effort, and then you've got all these kinds of distortions that happen. In addition to the fact that the brain is starting, when a child is abused, starts to develop a different neural network and neural chemistry. Okay, and that makes it really hard, that cortisol levels shoot up and make it really hard for the brain, again, to learn new information, to recall information, to process information. And that inhibits like a double indemnity, a double punishment on these children who either develop characteristics of dyslexia because of the stress and the trauma they are experiencing, the adverse childhood experiences. And then if they're dyslexic, then it's doubly and triply compounded. Okay, so we want the children and adolescents to learn to read, write, and spell and do math. Then if you add the domestic violence in this causation cycle, revictimization of the child occurs and inhibits learning. Abuse can cause symptoms of dyslexia and learning disability or inability. So, it's, the asks that I have are really very important because children really need help. The judicial system as well as other systems like the education clearly need to be updated with regard to several issues, including the effects of adverse childhood experiences and how much experience is negatively affect, affected a youngster's ability to read, write, spell, do math, recall, process, and use information, and their memory system that's shut down with abuse. These systems need to know how to identify and find out if they've reduced adverse childhood experiences in order to prevent adverse childhood experiences, including child abuse and domestic violence, from negatively altering children's brain networks. Now, the good news is, and all the researchers are showing this, including this guy, Mr. Jensen, apparently for students, Rich Teaching Eric Jensen, and many others. This can be reversed, but why allow it to happen in the first place? We need to make judges aware, and it doesn't, and the public aware. But it can't stop there. It must go to beyond raising awareness in the current system so that these judges and everybody associated with these judicial systems have mandatory training about this cohort of individuals that Larry Goldstein refers to, and also the Ames study he refers to, that cost $5 billion, I believe that's correct, $5 billion a year in the judicial system in the United States, in America, when it doesn't need, if they were trained to find these individuals who are sexually abusing these children in their domestic and other types of abuse, obviously, in these domestic situations, then this would also help our budgets. Judges need an update and most current training in order to do better and more child-oriented efficient job. And judges need to get this training and updates to identify the cohort that costs taxpayers this much money. Okay, I already read that part. Another system that needs updates is the school system, Teachers, Psychologists, Social Workers Administration. Teachers need updated information regarding dyslexia and dyslexia literacy with the most current research and scientific-based training on learning mechanisms for all dyslexics and all students. Because it just doesn't work for dyslexics or abused kids. It works for all kids. It's scientific-based teaching instead of see and say, three-queuing method. This will increase outcomes and decrease the risk of incarceration, domestic violence, and abuse, system abuses towards dyslexics and decrease the welfare rolls while increasing outcomes. In addition to the fact that we're finding that students have, that have characteristics of dyslexia, whether it's from being in a domestically violent situation or experiencing adverse childhood experiences or childhood abuse, those children who have characteristics of dyslexia, or whether it's dyslexics that are, you know, diagnosed because of their genetic makeup and their brain setup, which is perfectly wonderful the way it is, because we need those types of learners, these dyslexics, whether it's from either group, tend to experience more abuse, verbal abuse, because they're in this cycle where the brain shuts down, when the stress goes up, and then there's more and more frustration. And there are studies that are emerging during the last five to 10 years that indicate that dyslexics are abused more. So, that's my plea, that we pass that Child Safe Act, that we educate all of the judges, whether they are, because even the ones that are suspect right now, they need that education too. Also teacher education preparation programs, and so that these children will develop working skills and participation and be taxpaying members and enjoying society. It would be a good idea also for the court systems, providing incarcerated people to scream them for dyslexia. Judges need to inquire with those offenders, especially adolescent offenders, before them, whether they have difficulties learning to have a read, write, and spell, and do math. We also request our reforms in education of judges to include, make a requirement that judges inquire whether the adolescents, like I just said, have difficulties or whether there's a family history of this. If they do, if they do such, if they do this, and these children do have problems, then the judge and the court would order the student to begin a screening, and the offender would be given a screening and go to an educational triage where incarcerated, while incarcerated, in addition to serving their sentence. We're starting to launch some programs in Long Island in this, and we're looking at trying to get grants in order to do this within the prison system. And then also for our everyday you and I citizens. So, I thank you very much. Here's some interesting research. All of this that I'm saying is research-based, promoting an environment of wellness, school supports, success academically, socially, emotionally, and behaviorally. Because we know that home environments as well as school environments are very powerful things. And we want our children to be able to have great and productive lives. This is some OSERS guidance when I was on the New York Education Department Invitational Dyslexia Legislative Forum in 2017. It clarifies INDA. And we want to encourage states to remind their district the importance of addressing the unique educational needs with children with specific learning disabilities, dyslexia, dyscalculia, and dysgraphia, and especially those emotional supports that are needed for children who are experiencing adverse childhood abuse that is creating characteristics of dyslexia. Thank you very much. And again, please remember that Child Safe Act and reeducating the judges.
Thank you very much, Evelyn. If we can go back to the list now, I'm going to start presenting our victims. They're going to be, for the sake of the children, protecting the children's identities and specific identifiers.
So, I had to make Evelyn the host in order to enable her to screen share. So, in order to get them-
I'll hit the stop.
Evelyn, if you can make Alana the host again, please.
There you go. I just let go of the-
Transfer it back to her. Thank you very much. Those of you that are watching via YouTube, we will have, in the description area, we will have all the information for this meeting. Those of you that are in the state of New York that are mothers that have been victimized by Anthony McGinty, you will be able to get ahold of us, you can be a part of what we are doing. And we are also establishing committees. We've already appointed people throughout the state of New York through different judges that have been doing the same type of horrific behavior. And we are going to be having our committee presented throughout the state of New York. Your senator or whomever in your particular area may continue to be Senator Michelle Henchy and on throughout the state of New York. And you'll be able to get that information after this live video. We'll fill that all in for you guys. We had a little, what do you call it, a recording issue tonight with my Zoom. For some reason, Zoom did not click over to YouTube. I don't know why. It should have, it's a paid service. So I had to do this with two devices. But is it, is this- But is it, is it, is the host back over to you, Alana?
No, not yet. I don't, I don't know if she knows.
Okay, so I need you to go to participants. Evelyn, if you could, and just give her release back host to Alana, if you could, because I can't, I don't have no authority to do that because we gave it to you.
Okay. That's A-L-A-N-A.
I don't know how she has herself.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, make host, got it. Wow, I figured it out. Yay.
Thank you so much, everybody. And before I begin, we're going to have our victims now each present three minutes each, unless they were given an extra, if they were given extra time. I do want to say though, just by listening to the three experts, I think it's pretty clear to say that by the judges like Anthony McGinty giving children to abusers, and again, we have, we have criminal backgrounds and everything to add to what's happened here specifically, there's not, there's no way he could have missed any of this. When New York State, you know, issues protection order after protection order and arrests somebody over and over again and so on and so forth, and the judge, you know, puts a blind eye to that and specifically takes children from all mothers, you have a massive issue there. And then you have the children attorneys working without, they don't even speak to the children at all whatsoever, and if they do, they just speak opposite of what the children want. Then you have, you have crimes actually being committed right there. Those are actual crimes. And I think it's safe to say by the three, listening to the three experts tonight, that this would be, and I would have to say Vicky could probably answer that, this would have to be ongoing American Disability Act violations when you keep putting somebody in front of their abuser over and over and over and over through a court system, and then the judge himself is abusing them as well and just intentionally placing children at risk. I would have to say that that would be covered under the ADA as well. Let me go to, yeah, she agrees. Let me go to our first testimonial, which is G Funk, and then G can yield it to Alana Orr.
Hi, thanks for hearing me today. I'm Gina from Germany. I immigrated here when I was five years old. I'm the eldest of five children and an artist, and I'm an upstanding citizen who has never had more than a parking ticket. I had goals to become an art therapist and write children's books and illustrate them too. But my life was sideswiped when I gave my social security number to family court seeking orders of protection for my children and myself from their father. The domestic violence shelter I was residing at, as well as cops, doctors and other advocates advised me to go to family court to establish custody and to seek orders of protection for myself and my children and to also report to CPS about the child abuse. After two years of pre-trial, trial was finally held, but it was in my absence because my, because I asked for an adjournment of the, because I had a federal appointment with immigration, but my request was denied by McGinty. The respondent testified in my absence and his witnesses testified in my absence and McGinty held ex parte communications with the defendant's counsel in my absence because I pled the fifth, because I was being asked during questioning to disclose the confidential address of the domestic violence group that I was admitted into. Anthony McGinty struck my testimony, denied my witnesses to testify on my behalf and denied my evidence to be put on the record. McGinty awarded full physical and legal custody to my abuser. I was reduced to six hours once a week with my children because McGinty said that since the parents cannot co-parent and there is no evidence of domestic violence or child After I lost custody, I was ordered to pay child support far beyond my means. I was threatened with jail time in a willfulness hearing, which was held by McGinty. I had my bank account frozen and my driver's license suspended. With the loss of my children who were ordered to live with their abuser, I was further traumatized and legally abused and repeatedly exposed to further trauma. I stayed strong and kept doing everything that I'm supposed to do as a mother to protect my children from further harm. The very system that was designed to protect my children and me from further harm has treated me as a criminal, although criminals have more rights in criminal court than mothers of family offenses do in Ulster County Family Court. The legal abuse I'm experiencing is not just because of Anthony McGinty's corruption, corrupt actions, it's the whole Ulster County Family Court's gender biases against mothers who report abuse. The biases between the judges, the attorneys of the child and the court appointed attorney. Through an orchestrated series of detrimental court orders, the rights of domestic violence victims and child abuse victims are being stripped of their rights. It's very difficult to prove that there was any injustice that happened because the higher courts are not seeing that something is wrong with this family court system's tactics against mothers and children of family violence. Why are judges and attorneys not held accountable? Why are abusers not held accountable for crimes they are committing against their own families? Why are abusers empowered by the court, family court custody orders? Why are victims disempowered and subjugated to their abuser without findings of fitness or unfitness? I thought my case was unique due to the conflict of interest that was present in my case. I think I, yeah, so which McGinty admitted to, but denied. Did I already say that?
No, go ahead.
Okay, so I skipped that. So McGinty admitted that there was a conflict of interest with the respondent's family and I was also denied the right through my attorney's advice to request that the attorney for the children, Marion Kokos, was, would be removed because of the same conflict of interest that McGinty had. So in my quest for healing from the trauma, in the quest for healing from the trauma in my broken family, I found that I'm not alone. Following me are only a handful of women who are experiencing and witnessing the same pattern of abuse against women and children in the Ulster County Family Court and CPS, Child Protective Services. How can we have faith in justice when there are not enough resources to support and there is no accountability for the criminals when we report crimes committed against us and our children? There's so much more that I could say. I want my experience to be the story of our past and not continue to be part of my children's future. Thanks so much and please help. I'm missing many years of quality time with my children.
Gina, I want to thank you so much for sharing that tonight. And I just, I want to thank all the women that are speaking up this evening. An adult child of Anthony McGinty's abuse, sorry, my thing kind of kicked off for a second. But I want to thank you, and one thing I don't know if you did say, your profession works for children, you work for children, right? In your profession, your professional capacity.
Yeah, I mean, I take care of kids.
Yeah, so it just goes to show you what.
I was everyone's babysitter in the neighborhood. People trust me with their children.
So I, and anybody I see, like a lot of people joining, you are definitely going to want to go back to watch this from the beginning, this is a special session. Senator Michelle Henchy and her chief of staff, Leah Goldman, we are making changes in the state of New York and tonight we are exposing the absolutely diabolical things that administrative judge Anthony McGinty, and of course, that would also cover Judge Savona and Judge Mizell, and also the child attorneys, and you just, you named one, and of course, you're going to have, you have many that are talking about Amy Ingram and several others that just, what they're, what they're doing is absolutely barbaric. So Gina, thank you so much, and the next person would be Alana Orr.
Hi, sorry, I just had to unmute myself just then. So my name is Alana Orr. I'm interested in the creative arts and I'm a musician by trade. I am a fit mother and I'm a good upstanding citizen and I value honesty. I'm a great mother, I'm attuned to my child's needs, I have read, have a criminal history until I went to, I was criminalized and re-victimized. I got pregnant and I tried to make it work with the father, but it was impossible because he didn't want to be a father and he was a domestic violence perpetrator and child abuse perpetrator. I became a single mother due to domestic violence and I had obtained an order of protection against him. My ex took me to court and that if I reported his abuse, he would make sure that I would lose my child. I had PTSD and battered women syndrome, which the court did not accommodate and further traumatized me with legal abuse, and now I have CPTSD. My life was destroyed by family court because I filed protection and became a product of gender bias and court discrimination. My child reported to me that my child's father had supervised visits that were ordered. I reached out to the authorities. I did everything that I was supposed to do in order to protect my child. I was searching for help in every avenue, human rights, the Child Advocacy Center, Family Violence Unit, Crime Victims Assistance Program, Family Woodstock Domestic Violence Group, Legal Services of the Hudson Valley, Child Protective Services, police, law enforcement, et cetera. They told me to go to family court to solve the problem. We were not protected. All my evidence was dismissed. My advocates were not supportive of me in family court and would not testify. Attorneys attacked the credibility of anyone who was willing to support me in family court. Child Protective Services testified against me in court, even though it was on an unfounded report. They didn't validate the abuse. The caseworker said I was a good mom, yet I was denied all contact with my child for two and a half years. I was under custody. Human rights were terminated in my absence without my consent on a default order on stipulation of consent that I wasn't even present in the courtroom to consent to, under duress before my abuser. According to the attorney, and I must prove him unfit in order to regain full custody, even though I was never proven unfit when custody was seized from me. My rights under the ADA, Americans with Disabilities Act, are that I can file petitions to modify even though I'm told I can't help because I cannot show a change in circumstances to prove that I'm fit. My ADA rights are being violated. It's possible that the person is accused because of the gender bias. I can't present evidence, can't call by my fitness as a mother who reported domestic violence and child abuse because my evidence is completely dismissed and disregarded by the Ulster County Family Court. I kept filing petitions, but they were all ignored. I made five minute phone calls monitored by my parents who were empowered to continue the abuse against me, back to having no time. McGinty said I'm longer allowed as long as I'm being represented by counsel. Unable to prove a change in circumstances, modify orders that shouldn't legally require a change in circumstances to modify. Since I had no trial, no hearing, court was held in my absence, I was subject to coercion, fraud, collusion, all while I was under duress. I was unable to restore my rights and can no longer keep filing. My child remains at risk as the years go by. McGinty has judicial immunity, which makes it impossible to hold him accountable, just as it's impossible to hold my abuser accountable, which further exacerbates my PTSD from domestic violence and child abuse, turning it into CPTSD from legal abuse. My child and I are still suffering and we can't heal until this is resolved and my family unit is restored. I want this abuse to stop so that it doesn't continue in my own child with an intergenerational cycle of abuse and so that this doesn't happen to other children in the future. We now have legal abuse syndrome and we have CPTSD because of family court and my child is further traumatized as I tried to heal her without any advocates or support system to protect us from further harm. I'm not even allowed to take her to the therapist according to his court order. My child is still in danger and I can't help her heal properly until my rights are restored. I've lost my right to sing my child to sleep at night due to court orders. Even though I have been socially shamed by my community, authorities and my family, I'm still trying to protect my child from further abuse without the ability to heal from the trauma of losing my child and continuously fighting an uphill battle with no end in sight to the perpetual cycle of abuse resulting in re-victimization, re-traumatization and criminalization without recourse, resources and no follow-up. My child is in danger. My story is not unique. We want victims to feel safe to report abuse instead of being criminalized and further victimized. This is continuing the abuse cycle for generations and generations. This is systemic abuse to keep people in the system for family court to continue having clients. Please help. Thank you.
Alana, thank you so very, very much, and I know that was very stressful. And, you know, as an ADA advocate myself, I can hear it in your voice right now, and I know how hard that was for you and Gina, and I just thank you both because your story will save countless children and it's the most difficult thing in the world to go through. I've watched it throughout the years, I've become close and love all of you, and I can vouch for the abuse that's gone on, and we can only point it to one man, Anthony McGinty, for not protecting these women and children. We have all the, we have all the criminal backgrounds and everything of these, of the men that he's given these children to. It is absolutely sick. The next person is a grown child who is a victim of Anthony McGinty. She's going by the name M. Foster because she and her siblings were placed into the foster care system. This dates back a decade, so I'm going to turn it over to her now.
Hi, I'm M. Foster. I, I was in the system personally for almost six years. I was taken away with my siblings. My younger sibling actually was in the system for nine years. We were all taken from a family who, my parents loved us, we were well taken care of. My mom prioritized education and made sure that we were well taken care of, same thing with my father. We were taken away because Anthony McGinty said that we were educationally neglected and there was no, there was no basis upon that because we were honorable students and the only child who had, wasn't quite, you know, on the honorable level was my brother, but he had a learning disability that was well known. My mom did everything in her powers, was my father to make sure that he was getting the proper education and that, you know, he would be in the right classes and have that individualized attention. So there was absolutely no basis for it. Then he tried to say that my father was abusing my mom and there was never a founding on that. So those were the two, his two queens, which like I said, they were never founded. He put us in the system, he destroyed our lives. I was put with multiple people that abused me physically, verbally, and honestly, I was put in place where I was groped so sexually. My younger sibling was put in residential facilities where he was forced to fight other youths that were in the facility for literally the fun of, I guess, whatever fun they can get out of that from the staff members. He was called a criminal, he was treated like absolute garbage, he was forced to urinate in his pants at 10 years old because he was not allowed out of a locked room because the staff wouldn't let him. It, it's just ongoing abuse. I was told that I was worthless, that I was disgusting. I had never been told in my life when I lived with my parents, my, my mom used to tell me how beautiful I was and how strong and smart and just made you feel so great because, you know, that's what she wanted to make you feel like, you had the whole world in your hands. And same thing with my dad, my dad was very loving, he was always telling me that I was going to be a very brilliant person one day and like I just, you know, I just felt that endless warmth. But never in any of the places that I was, I was put in multiple places, I was put in multiple foster homes, I was put in a group home, I was put in a psychiatric facility as part of a punishment from Anthony McGinty, actually. You know, like I said, I was never treated with warmth or kindness, I was just told that I was disgusting, so. But yes, I dealt with that for almost six years, like I said, my younger brother dealt with that for almost, actually nine years, over nine years, and I have an older brother who dealt with it for about two years. My sister is adopted. I had contact with her for a short period of time and then they just decided, you know, Anthony McGinty and DSS decided that after she was adopted, that there was no longer any type of communication I could have with her. They cornered my mother into signing her rights away to Vanessa. So it's, you know, I'm sorry, I didn't know I said her name, but it's just, it's very hard, it's very, very difficult. it's just, it's very hard. It's very, very difficult to, to talk about because I haven't seen my sister in almost a decade. So it's been very, very hard. I, I didn't even get to say goodbye. My mother was the only person, you know, besides my father who tried to help me. When my mother tried to help me and she took me from an abusive foster home because I was reporting the abuse and everybody, you know, from the agency that I was a part of to DSS, to Anthony McGinty knew about the abuse that was going on. And they didn't do anything about it. They actually told my abusers what I was saying about them, which made the abuse worse. So my mom had taken off with me because I was about to hang myself in a closet. When she took off with me, they arrested her and they put her in jail for a year and they gave her three felonies. And they treated her like an animal. The people that were abusing me, I actually got coerced to lie under oath. They wanted me to lie under oath and they tried to get my mother to convince me to lie under oath, but she wouldn't because she, she said it was wrong and she would never tell me to do that. Because if I told them about the abuse that I was enduring and that's why I ran away, that they would take my mom to prison for five years for kidnapping and they would take me to juvie. And I was terrified because I was 13 years old. So I was, you know, I was scared. And I didn't want to see my mom get put in prison because I've seen all of the wrongdoings that Anthony McGinty was capable of doing. Just by being able to place me in places with my siblings and watch me be over-medicated and, you know, watch me treated like absolute garbage. So I was terrified and I went along with them. And I was actually punished and put in the same facility that scarred me for a year. So, and he literally just looked at me with a cold stare and had absolutely, there was no compassion in his heart. I begged him to put me in a place where I wasn't, you know, that hadn't been scarred for a year. I, it's in my therapy notes and everything, you know? So I begged him and he looked at me and he said, you know, "M. Foster, you're going to Four Winds." So that was the place that scarred me in Katona. So yeah, I can definitely attest to that it's a lasting, it's, it's something that you never get over. It's something that stays with you. I am an adult. I'm 24 years old now. And I still suffer from the effects. My younger brother, unfortunately, he does drugs because he's got so many memories, so many things that have happened to him while he's in the system that he can't cope well. You know, my, like I said, my sister, I haven't seen in years. I've been barred from seeing her. They've never let me see her. I am also an upstanding citizen. You know, I have never had any type of wrongdoings in, in, you know, where I've gotten any type of misdemeanors, felonies, nothing. I'm a CNA. I have a fingerprint clearance card. I'm studying for nursing. So, you know, and same thing with my parents. None of my parents had any type of ability to do this. And actually, with the CPS worker who got involved in the first place, who, you know, gave them misinformation that McGinty happily went along with, it was founded that it was misinformation and they still made sure that we stayed in the system because my parents didn't have the money for a good attorney and they took advantage of their, of the situation. So they, they penalize the people that try to be there for you and help you. And they let these abusers just walk away free and literally, they, they just take your whole life from you. So I can attest to that. Like I said, from being from 12 and being in the system, ones have to suffer getting needles, you know, shoved in their butt because they're reacting to a situation of abuse or, you know, being upset because they miss their parents, you know? And I've been in that same situation where I've cried and said how much I miss my mom and want my mom. And they let me see my mom for two hours. Seventeen and going into college. I was the third person in my agency to go to college. So up until that point, then I got, what was it? It wasn't unsupervised visits, it was monitored visits. So. Like I said, it, it's, it's lasting trauma. My mom has been through hell and back. She jumped through every hoop that, everything that he asked of her, she did. Everything that my dad was asked of, he did. And they threatened him by trying to say that they would take his house if he didn't, you know, comply with the courts and, and give up his rights. So, you know, it's, it, it's a lot of, it's a lot of damage. It's, it's a lot to fit into a conversation right now because it's, you know, a decade worth of damage, over a decade now. So, you know, I just, I just hope that they understand that, anybody who gets out of this, I just hope they understand that it, it, it's not just in the moment you're suffering. Your suffering lasts in that moment. It lasts after that moment and it can really permanently damage your future because, I mean, I'm put together, but my heart is broken. I, you know, he completely separated me from my family members. He treated me, like I said, like an animal. You know, I, I've had the same thing, PTSD. I, I haven't been able to be normal because I just constantly have memories that flood back in my brain. So, you know, and watching my siblings suffer is a, it's a fate worse than even just watching me suffer. It, you know, you're supposed to be there for your siblings and I, you know, I wasn't able to be there. I was barely able to even visit with them. And when my older brother had gotten out of care, they wouldn't even let him see me anymore. So it's just, you know, it, it's just an ongoing cycle and it's all because of Anthony McGinty and the DSS and CPS workers that were involved. They took a perfectly happy family and they tore us down. And like I said, we're all suffering from it. And, you know, my brother's suffering right now with, you know, like I said, with his drug use because of it, because he was never like that prior. But he's explained to me all the horror stories, everything that's happened to him, all the abuse. And my mom has been through all types of like therapy, everything because, you know, they took her kids from her for absolutely no reason and then treat her like, so she's a monster. She's the only one besides my father who's tried to help me and save me. My law guardians, none of them ever heard anything that came out of my mouth or they literally just looked at me like, okay, you know, it's like a 30-minute meeting, okay? Like I, I was a docket number. I wasn't a person. So I, I just hope that whoever's watching this gets that, that it's real pain and it lasts for a lifetime. So hopefully they can stop this monster from doing this to other kids and other mothers and other families because it's wrong. It's wrong what he does. Thank you.
Melissa, I can't thank you enough. Melissa, I, I showed him on the screen. There's a couple of things I wanted to ask you because I know that, well, one of the things that stands out so strong is the fact that I've heard this before and I've seen it before. He looked at you with dark black eyes with not any compassion, you said, when you were telling him you were being abused, but he knew about the abuse that was going on in these group homes. Says here, Children's Center on the Times Union paper faces abuse lawsuit. Do you know about that one? And then do you know about the Green Chimney survivors? Could you tell the audience a little bit about that?
Yes, so Green Chimneys, my brother was placed in Green Chimneys after he got out of Four Winds. It was his first residential placement. So the, the place is known for sexually abusing the children and physically abusing them as well as for they, it's just abuse all the way around. My brother was heavily abused there by the staff members. He would complain, you know, didn't tell them about what was happening. And like I said, nobody did anything about it. He was, you know, just called names. Like I said, he was forced into fights there. The staff members were very, were just awful to him. And, you know, he hasn't fully been able to tell me everything that's happened, I think, because he's just, you know, it's hard for him. But that, that's what, what happened at Green Chimneys and they actually shut the place down because of it. It was, it's had abuse for decades now, since I believe the 40s or the 50s, they've been, you know, claiming that the abuse and it's been multiple people.
So he knew, he knew full well of all this abuse, but he kept, he took the children from a safe home. I just want to make this clear. Made up, made up scenarios that didn't take place, destroyed an entire family, divided up siblings, continues to divide up siblings to this very day. I believe he's a part of an adoption scam. And looked you with dead black eyes and told you, you'll go basically wherever I put you.
Absolutely.
I just want to make it clear.
He wouldn't even acknowledge my mom. He, when she was in court, he wouldn't even look at her. He treated her like she was absolutely nothing. He wouldn't even allow her to speak to defend herself. He would just literally just, you know, read off his orders and, you know, let the Department of Social Services, you know, speak as though my mom was a huge monster and that we should never be placed back with her again. But they knew all well of all the abuse I endured, being shaken, being dragged across the floor, being told how fat I was, being denied second portions because I was too fat. You know, all of these horrible things. I was scared to come home from school when I was living in my foster homes. I didn't, especially my first foster home, which he actually had me put back with because he put, he had me put between a rock and a hard place. If I didn't go with her, I would have had to stay in Four Winds where I was traumatized. And if I, you know what I mean? If I did go back with her, then it was just further traumatization. And each home that, you know, that I did find that I liked, that I wanted to be placed in, they all, McGinty, DSS, they all decided that they weren't good homes to be placed in. But every home that was abusive, they decided that's a good placement.
Yes, and that's actually something I wrote in my book. I said, it's the opposite of normal. Everything that he does is the opposite of normal and I think that's an understatement. Well, M. Foster, I just want to thank you for your testimony. I believe your voice is going to save the lives of children. And I know this is, there's no words, there's no words to even say the pain and suffering. There's not, there's not enough recompense in the world for him to pay for, but he, we need to get him on, on all these crimes and all his little accomplices too. So I thank you for your voice today. We all appreciate you today. And I got to meet your mom and dad and, and I, I, they're wonderful people. So he's, he's truly destroyed lives. He's truly destroyed.
Oh yes, he's destroyed mine for a lifetime as well as my siblings and my parents. There's, there's no getting over that. There's no, like I said, that type of trauma, any type of trauma really, but it's especially what he's put us through. There's never, it's never going to, you know, it, it's never going to go away. And if I may make one more point, when I was listening to, you know, to PowerPoint about dyslexia, my, my brother, he did very well actually being homeschooled with my mom. Because, you know, she, she was very good, like I said, individualized instruction. And even when we were in our homeschool district, my mom made sure that he was getting, you know, he was getting the education that he deserved, that he was, you know, everything was in place, all the plans that were needed were in place. Where the foster care system let him drop out and he was at an eighth grade level, seventh grade level. He was under so much stress because all they'd tell him is, oh, I'm not going to waste my time teaching you guys because you guys aren't going to absorb anything. That's what Max, or my God, I keep saying names, I'm sorry. That's what my, my brother told me. So, you know, it's, I just wanted to point that out, that, you know, we're taken away for educational neglect when my parents were totally pro-education in every way, shape and form. And they put my brother through this system that just totally neglected his education. I mean, he can't even read. He can barely write. So, you know, and it's, and it is caused by stress and it's caused by them, them not taking initiative to try to work with him either, just letting him sit in a classroom and do absolutely nothing and then drop out of school.
That, that's why I have the experts in here today because it verifies everything you're saying. They verified everything that you're saying, you know? These are, these are the outcomes of what's happening to the children. They are producing, they are, first they're, they're creating the victim. They're creating the future generation and then they're destroying them further, for, for, just for monetary gain. It's a very evil and wicked system. Well, M., thank you so very, very much. I'm going to go on to the next testimony, which is Tammy.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
So I've, I was a employee for 15 years for Ulster Green A R C. During that time, I worked with people that had developmental disabilities. I even managed a 12-bed house. After my employment there, I was a school bus driver. So we're drug tested and everything like that for a condition for a CDL license. My daughter's father had a severe drug problem, which I didn't know until after I got pregnant for my first order with him. And I ended up getting pregnant again with him after I had tried to leave. He went to jail for driving without a license because he had lost it. So I was left with two children by myself. And when was facing eviction because I couldn't afford living as a single parent with two children. And when that happened, I went to social services, but they denied me help. So I had went to live and helped take care of my cousin, who ended up sexually molesting my children. While James, or their father was in jail. And so we, they already had PTSD and a history of sexual abuse. James had wanted visitation with the girls, but I didn't want that to happen because of the drug use and everything. So he took me to family court. Judge McGinty was assigned our case. There's been several stayaway orders and incarcerations related to James's abuse of my son from a different relationship, as well as domestic abuse in front of the children that we shared together. So at first, Anthony McGinty made it so that it was supervised visits for the girls and their father. And he didn't show up and all kinds of stuff. So the supervision facility bounced it back to family court. But somehow the paperwork got switched around stating that I did not show up, which was not the case. And I don't even know if they changed that because not only did I speak with the facility and the court, so did the girl's psychologist. Anyway, he gave James, the girl's father, full access visitation for, on the weekends. And during that time, my youngest daughter, five years old, had made comments that her father had touched her bottom. And she was bleeding rectally. I took her to the hospital and there was an investigation going on through the Family Children Advocacy Center. And we were still going through family court and I was trying to get them to stop the visitations and McGinty would not do that. So back and forth, back and forth, and trying to get him to stop the visitations. He wouldn't do it. He would not let their psychiatrist or therapist introduce any kind of testimony or anything. Didn't take into consideration any of the past violations or jail time that he's, he had done. So then I ended up having a stroke on the 10th of December. And we were supposed to go back for court on the 12th of December. I had contacted my lawyer and let them know the situation and she tried to get an adjournment to reschedule so that I could be in attendance. Now, mind you, there was never a question about custody to be switched. The father didn't want custody or anything like that. It was all about visitation. So while I'm in the hospital, So while I'm in the hospital, after having a stroke, the Judge McGinty had given custody to the father while he was still under investigation for sexually abusing my youngest daughter. And McGinty had told my sister and my brother, who were actually taking turns watching the girls while I was in the hospital, told them that if I had got, if they had gotten involved or went and picked up my girls, that they would be thrown in jail for interfering with a court decision. When I heard of that, I had left the hospital against medical advice and took a taxi cab from Vassar Hospital to Carhonkson Elementary School and got my daughters. At first, they were not going to give my daughters to me. They had the police officers there and everything else. Like, I was gonna cause a ruckus, but I was explaining to the principal what was going on. So we ended up actually calling the court and the, um, child's attorney. The school didn't receive any kind of order or anything as far as the custody being switched. So, but they said that they would have to go by what they said. So, um, the principal had called the girl's father, and he didn't respond, didn't return the phone call back or anything. So they ended up sending the police officers to his home. And when they got there, they made him call the school. And the, he had told the principal for the girls to come home with me, that he wanted them left in my care. Now, mind you, that's the same day that the court, McGinty, had ruled the, um, children to be in his care. He had said that he couldn't get the girls back and forth to his school because he doesn't have transportation, that the place he lived in, he couldn't have the girls there to stay. So the girls, since then, has been with me.
Thank God.
And had I not left the hospital, my girls would be in foster care right now because he did not go and pick them up. So in the meantime, right now, the girls don't wanna have anything to do with their father. Not really, they're afraid to. And I don't wanna subject them to that. But he keeps threatening me that he's going to take me back to court. And when he calls, the girls generally kind of ignore the phone call and play in a room or just leave the room that the phone is in. And he gets angry about that and tells me that I'm coaching them and making them not like him, which is not the case. They formed their own opinion. I mean, he smashed their birthday cake in front of her and all kinds of stuff, slammed them down physically. So.
So I thank you for your story. And again, that's gonna, you know, that also will help people to see what, what so many women and children have dealt with, with Anthony McGinty. Um, and also, um, the one thing that stands out is the fact that this man does not do due diligence at all, literally to place children in the sole care and custody of someone who's under investigation at the Children's Center for sexual, sex abuse of a chi- of a minor, is just beyond. And, and that leads us to so many, that opens up so many cans of worms right there because we've seen how the forensics are not done properly in the first place. A- a- and all, all of this is a big mess to begin with, but, um, thank you so much. And who is the next, um, I don't have the screen. So who is the next, um, oh, hang on, I think I just, here we go.
J E.
Who is it next? Let me just see.
J E.
I don't know if she's in, is J E in? This would be a Sullivan County victim. She might not have been able to stay on. J E, Sullivan County. So, um, Anthony McGinty is also in Sullivan County, and so I'm getting, um, a, a bunch of mothers from Sullivan County where he is, um, harming them. So if, I'll give it one more chance, is J E available from Sullivan County? Okay, I'm gonna move on to, she may come in, and then I can always go back to her. This next one is, um, if I can just kind of open that up a little so I can see it. Uh, A L, you're next. And this ta- testimony, um, is a perf- this is a professional who's been victimized for over two decades. Uh, I just lost the whole screen. Give me a second. Give me one second, please. Gotta love it. Is a, um, a professional who's been victimized for over two decades, who holds a master's degree in Spanish, and Spanish educator and a, and secondary education. Also, she's mandated by law to report child abuse. A L, if you can please go ahead and unmute yourself for three minutes.
Okay. Can you hear me?
Uh, yes.
Okay. Um, first of all, let me just say, can anybody wrap their head around what's going on here? How, how can anybody wrap their head around?
Can you put your, your volume just a tiny bit up?
Uh, okay.
There you go.
My name is A L. I came here to Ulster County on July seventeenth of nineteen ninety-four as a professional with obviously no criminal background, a Spanish teacher mandated by law to report child abuse. If you as a community cannot embrace a professional, uh, I beg to ask you, who can you? Okay. In nineteen ninety-eight, I entered family court in hopes that the court would facilitate a resolution to a dire problem I had been utterly plagued with. Much to my utter dismay, I entered a revolving door in a justice system with absolutely no resolve, but rather a nightmare. Uh, there were three words that were, uh, spoken by Francesca, which I'm sure she obviously, uh, took under her wing. But this is beyond barbaric. This is a diabolical system. I single-handedly raised my son for five years. The father had nothing to do with this child. His family had nothing to do with this child. When we reunited, I said to him, "I suffer from chronic post, you know, uh, with a post-traumatic stress disorder. I choose not to have your family involved." So instead of accepting, you know, that situation, he reinvented the wheel and he made sure that he would revictimize me for not one decade now we're going on to. Uh, I single, like I said, single-handedly raised my son. In the five years, it's kind of unusual, I would say, that I was not considered unfit. The minute he came back into my life and I put down the ground rules, all of a sudden, I be- I became, uh, mentally ill because I didn't like his family. Okay? That being said, after two decades of being outrightly targeted, which was equivalent to an ever-ending witch hunt, okay? As recently as January eleventh of two thousand and eighteen, the deplorable criminal, okay? That's the only, I, 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 I can't even wrap my head around what he's done, not only to me, but others. Uh, without hesitation, Anthony McGinty, uh, had me evicted from my marital residence of twenty-six years. If I had a parking ticket, under his guise, I'm now considered a criminal because of contempt of his, one of his wonderful, uh, handwritten court orders of protection, um, had me evicted of my mar- marital residence of twenty-six years while I was in a wheelchair. Okay? Um, only someone with a seared conscience or lack thereof would do this. Perhaps a Nazi. Um, during his reign of terror for the past fourteen years, I have been retaliated by him, uh, by writing an in- unfavorable article about his wife, Sarah McGinty, on or about November sixteenth of two thousand and sixteen, in the Times Herald, writing her being unfit for the job of pro- paid, probate judge. All I could say is absolute power corrupts absolutely. Her climb of dipping her hand in the escrow accounts of her clientele and misappropriately, uh, misappropriating funds to her benefit caused her to lose her license to practice law for a full year. By the way, this happens to be public information. I ask you, how ethical do you find this debate? She continues to remain, uh, slated on the bench, seated on the bench, in addition to her high and mighty husband, Anthony McGinty, the epitome of nepotism. I find this ongoing scenario to be overtly criminal. Since I asked for redress, I have biased Anthony McGinty to accuse himself on or about December eighteenth of two thousand and sixteen. After my exposing his wife, but to no avail, he took it upon himself to remain seated on his throne, his bench unable to cut his ties to continue to harass me ongoingly. Okay? Mine, please, uh, not only fell on deaf ears since he took seat, you know, uh, took the seat as Ulster County Family Court unopposed judge, but more alarming is his inability to function with a moral compass. He is a criminal who practices law from the bench with neither accountability nor in- or oversight. No cameras are surveilling, uh, his, his, uh, bench, his court. Collusion, um, it's obvious that collusion, which exists within these four walls, my continued offer of submitting evidence was met with his sadistic grin. Uh, uh, I'm not putting, I'm not giving you that opportunity. Whether I'm going to squash it, it's not relevant. Hmm. Uh, I had, uh, a spokesperson from the Crime Victims Association, present in court, and he did not allow her to talk. Must have just went there because, you know, I, 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 I was having a bad air day that day. The scales of justice are obviously lopsided in favor of the abusers. It's a pathetic set of circumstances when you enter a court to address your pressing concerns, to be shockingly met with an incredulous, overreaching, unfettered, incompetent chain of command. Instead of a resolution to a dire situation, once again, you met, you're met with indifference. I treat it as if, as if you were a criminal because you never had, we'll, we'll make you into a criminal, don't you wait, okay? Coming in there, you know, asking for a redress and, you know, how dare you? Uh, once again, you're met with an indifference inherent in all players involved. That goes for the guardian ad litem, and I will address, Claire Durst is another criminal, another player who needs to, you know, be, be put in jail because the, the courts rely on their testimony. And when they twist the truth to, to be conveniently, you know, uh, to their favor, I come up looking like, uh, the problem when in fact, she's the criminal. Okay? Still involved in my case, I, I, you know, my son is now thirty-four. Okay, give you an idea?
Wow.
Okay, so, um, the gals and the opposing counsel, these players don't aim to please, rather, their main objective is to prolong the dissension so that they can wind their greedy pockets. These public servants continue to answer to absolutely no one, adhere to absolutely no guidelines, and bottom line, get away with murder. It's beyond long overdue that we take the bull by its horns and appropriate, appropriately enforce oversight of these, I repeat, criminals.
Mm-hmm.
At large. Find a different source of income, one that requires accountability rather than stealing money from protective mothers who will fight instinctively, tooth and nail, to shelter their offspring from further abuse, further harm, okay? This family court is analogous to a three-ring circus won by buffoons, a mighty misnomer. It's not, it, where is there any concern about the family and keeping them cohesively intact? Uh, you just heard testimony of his, his black eyes? The man has a black heart, okay? The black eyes are just only a reflection of how criminal this man is. How many more innocent victims have to experience legal abuse syndrome, chronic PTSD, because you have incompetent men or women garbed in black robes haphazardly meeting our court orders of protection to the abusers? At what cost, you ask? It's priceless. Enough of the lame excuse for more enforcement that only reiter- reiterates the clueless chain of command. Oops, we made a mistake. Hmm. Uh, at what cost? Now Tommy Valva, Kyra Franchetta, and Mason DeCosmo are dead, innocent victims of the broken injustice system. Three strikes and you are out. Irreparable damages inflicted upon innocent victims while our tax dollars are fueling this corrupt system. Okay? There are, th- th- there's no, there, i- it's, it's not so, you know, three strikes and you're out, not so innocent same family court. They just keep on going and going. Uh, what, what function, uh, while our tax dollars are fueling this corrupt system, what function does this court serve? A cash cow. Our children are not commodities with a, with a price tag attached, nor are they pawns in a chess game. I demand you address an appropriate answer to how do you allow a distinct pattern of abuse? Go on indefinitely without accountability or oversight. Xenophobia runs a ramp- rampant tier in Ulster County. I am proud of where I come from, I'm proud of my accent. And, um, if you wanna be treated with respect, then try giving it. I state my case.
Thank you very much, that was excellent testimony.
Yeah, but I, I just wanna end with this. Two decades, i- i- it's about time something happens. I'm tired of everybody shuffling paperwork around. This man needs to be placed behind bars so that nobody can face this insanity one second longer. I appreciate every testimony prior to mine, but, uh, thi- this is monumental and i- it, something's gotta give. Thank you.
We're in full agreement with you. Full agreement, okay?
Okay, last thing, end the immunity of the judges, the evaluators, and all of the family court personnel. End it, okay? And that, it's a free-for-all. Nobody's watching, they get away with it. It's like they hand out haphazardly, like, like candy to a child. Yeah, what percent of something you have at your house, uh, in mid, in mid-sub zero degree where they're looking for housing? This is what we got as, as a public servant? Shame on you.
We agree, we're in full agreement. Thank you. Thank you for your testimony. The next, the next, the next victim, thank you very much for your testimony. The next victim is D M, D M.
Hi, um, I'm just, I'm gonna just say my name because I just, I don't feel the need to, you know, hide my, who I am or anything like that, so. Uh, my name is Deidre May, do you guys can hear me right?
Yes, loud and clear.
Okay, um, I just wanna start off by saying that, uh, my children and I, um, have been victims and have been suffering at the hands of, um, Anthony McGinty for seven years now. It'll be seven years in April. Um, I suffer from PTSD, anxiety, with a claustrophobia, panic disorder, and depression. And, um, my children were temporarily, I have two, or I have four children. And, um, my children were temporarily, I have two, I have four children. Um, two of them, my two youngest have the same father and, um, uh, it's really weird because, um, I have full custody of them and I had their whole lives. Um, my two oldest were temporarily removed. They have the same dad in two thousand and fourteen and they were placed with their father. Um, I have no criminal background. I am not a felon, I've never been to jail. Um, so, um, geez, I'm sorry, I'm just like so nervous.
You're, you're okay, you're doing good, you're doing good.
Um. Anyway, in two thousand and nine, um, their dad almost killed me. He beat me really bad. Um.
Take your time.
I, I'm sorry.
You're, no, you're okay. You're okay.
I, I suffered and I stayed with him for, for years and, um, I, my, my, my little boy saw this and he witnessed a lot. And, um, so in two thousand and fourteen, we had a trial. Um, well, no, my, my kids were taken then. Two thousand and fifteen, you know, I did everything they wanted. I, I, they, they, they took my kids from me basically because of the man that I have two. My children, my two youngest children's father, um, we had no, there is no, I didn't have my youngest yet. So like there was no, I had nothing, there was nothing against me. It's just that their father was obsessed with me, he's a narcissist and he, he still to this day is. And he doesn't leave me alone, his family doesn't leave me alone. So they made up, um, false report against me and false allegations. And they, he took my children away and I had to do domestic violence. I had to do parenting, I did all of which, I did all this and finished it within five months. And, um, Anthony McGinty stated that he'd give me my children back. He wanted, you know, just to see the paperwork. I, I gave everything, all the evidence, I had great letters, therapy. I've, I've been in intensive therapy, like, um, trauma based therapy. Um, I did everything and I never got my children back. So in two thousand and fifteen, I, um, I took it to trial. I had a pay lawyer and their father had a public defender.
Let me, let me go back to like clarify one part of this though. Her children weren't put in foster care, her children were put with the abuser who almost killed her. Okay, keep going now, go ahead.
Yeah, and, um, he would have, I, I just want to say I left out a crucial point. I, because of, I don't know if people really understand domestic violence, but those of you that don't, like, it's really hard to, to get out of the relationship, especially when, you know, I grew up seeing it as well, you know? So, um, I, I was supposed to testify against him and, um, uh, and when it came down to it, when I was supposed to testify, I backed out. So he would have, he was facing no less than seven years in state prison because they found the shotgun right on, like, he was going to kill me. I, I, uh, it was horrible. Like I couldn't, when I saw what he did to me and I looked in the mirror, my feet. Like, and my, my daughter, she, she, they sent the pictures to me some, for some reason. She found them one day and she asked me what happened. But this is just horrible. So anyway, in two thousand and fifteen, um, a year later, over a year later, um, I took it to trial and this was November, we went to trial in December. Their father was arrested by the state police for, um, um, violating the order against me. So, um, I went right to family court and Judge McGinty put a stayaway order on, on their father that protected myself, not, not my children, just me. And, uh, as we waited for the decision, um, he made the decision. I got the, the document in March. He gave their father full custody. Meanwhile, he had just placed an order of protection on him. He was arrested and after, you know, even though he beat me and he knew all of this because all of this was brought up in trial, we had, I actually was allowed to have, you know, witness, like I had my own witnesses or, you know, people testified on my behalf and all of that. I mean, everything was brought up. I mean, I've never, and I'm, I'm, I'm not the only woman. There was one before me who, he busted her face open with a beer bottle. So, I mean, he, he knew specifically that this man is dangerous and that he's evil and he's, he's just, just not a good person at all. So he gave him, um, full custody and I had every other weekend, every other Saturday, and I have Wednesdays after school till seven and that's all I got. And then the third paragraph stated that my children were not, I was, um, so much, just, I'm sorry to jump all over, but I was five months pregnant at the time. I was almost five months pregnant at the time of our, our, um, trial. And, um, you know, their father always, like I said, he always brings up other, he, he'll always say I'm with somebody. I'm always with somebody else, like, I don't know, he doesn't know anything about my life, but he just always says that. And, um, at the time, obviously, I, I've been, I was only with my kid's father and I've been with him. So we brought him up in court and, um, like I said, he's not a bad person and like, but Judge McGinty bases everything around this man, even to this day. But in the third paragraph of that order states, my children were not to be around so and so, um, until he completed a domestic violence class such as, um, I forgot what it's called. It's a class through, um, uh, family or what's that, I believe? It's like a, I don't think it's like a five month long class. Um, I don't know, it's for, um, batters, like people that abuse women. So he wanted my, my daughter that I was pregnant with, her father, to take this class. Meanwhile, oh, I have the order right here, sorry. Um, meanwhile, like this man almost killed me. If you, you know, if you would have found the votes, I wouldn't be here today. My kids wouldn't have a mother today. Um, it was Evolve, he wanted him to take, it, it stated that he was not to be present until, or near my children, until he successfully completed intensive domestic violence program such as Evolve. Meanwhile, their, their father never had to do anything, not anger management, no parenting, nothing. Um, so, you know, I continued to trial petition after petition after petition. I mean, I, I, I just, I couldn't believe what, I, I still can't believe after all of these years. Like I, I've missed out on birthdays, holidays. I've missed out on so much and I'm so emotional because today I have a warrant after my arrest because, and I turned myself in on Tuesday, Tuesday, because my children ran away on October seventh of this past October of twenty twenty and my son has been being beat by his father. I have pictures, I have that, well, that night specifically. And I, and I forgot to tell you, this is like crucial, he's, he's an alcoholic, he's a drug addict, he's a drug dealer. And I've made, I've made CPS reports, they've never drug tested him once. Like, this is just insane. So, um, you know, the, the, my children, the attorney for my children, he doesn't question my children. He doesn't, none of them care, they just, they don't care. It's just all about me and that's just what it's about. They don't like me for whatever reason. So, I mean, my children, to get back to what happened on October, this is, this is just insane. Like they ran away on October seventh at ten thirty, their dad came home at seven thirty drunk and he, he beat my son on his back with iPhone charger. Um, and, um, he had scratches, he, he went to get up, he went to grab him. He had scratches all over his face and the weekend prior to that was the last time I've seen him. I haven't seen him since October fourth. And my son is fourteen, my daughter's ten, and they sat here in my house and he told me, for some reason, he just decided, I guess that was the day, to tell me they had had enough. And they told me like the severity of what he's been doing, like, he, he drug my son around the yard by his hair and he had a bald spot in his head, his hair was all falling out. And, um, he had beat him with the iPhone charger another time. I mean, he's just a horrible person. So, um, the night my kids ran away, before they ran away, they, um, they just called, my daughter called my dad and, and they were just looking like for, like validity, like confirmation. They wanted everybody to know that, or just somebody to come in, that they'd be listened to, that somebody would actually care because CPS has never, they, they told CPS, they told, my son went to his school and a year ago, he told his, he told his guidance counselor, he told the school psychologist, he told the social order. And they wouldn't make a report because they said there was no marks, that's what they told me. And they told my little brother that, the school psychologist, because that's my son and my nephew, who's my brother's son, he is the school psychologist, they're, they're, um, football coach. And he said to my brother, we just don't want to look like we're taking sides here. Like these people are all, have all failed my, my, my children and my son. And my worst fear is that my son, because he doesn't want to live, he says he hates his life. I mean, this man is torturing my son because he has nobody else to torture. He hasn't had a girlfriend since I left him when my daughter was nine months old and she's ten. And he's, he's just, my son has no self-esteem, his self-worth is just shot, it's gone. It's like, you know, he just doesn't care about life, he don't care about himself. He's failing in school, his past three years, his grades are horrible. Like he just, he won't even talk, he has the book on his face. Even the night that they were here on October fourth, when they were telling me these stories, he was crying. I'm so sorry.
There's nothing to be sorry, you, you.
I helped, I helped them. I just said to him, I said, I'm so sorry. Andy doesn't get to say this. And then the next day, I was in Sardegis. And the next day, my children, my, actually I want to say this, before my son left, he called his, his baseball coach, who he's very close to, and he told my son, do not call Sardegis police because a year prior, my, my son came to my home and that's when he first told me that his dad was hitting him in two thousand and eighteen, or nineteen, sorry. No, I'm sorry, it was the end of two thousand and eighteen. And we called the Sardegis police and, um, a police officer came and he told me that, um, I don't know, he basically said there was nothing he could do. And they, he, he went back to the police station and, um, that's when my son texted his father and he said, um, I want to stay with my mom for a while. And anyway, the police officer called me back, called me actually, and he said, Ms. Mayor, I want you to know that you either, you have one of, you can do one of two things. You can get somebody to sit there with your two youngest children and we're gonna, we're going to come to your home and arrest you for kidnapping or we're going to, or you're going to have to send your son outside with his grandmother who has no rights to him at all because his father was drunk and couldn't come pick him up. So my son heard that and once he heard that, I mean, and he was begging and pleading with this officer like to please help him, like he was so, he's so intimidated. And, and he, he was like, Mom, I can't let you, I can't let that happen to you. And he just ran, he ran out the door and I, again, I didn't see them for almost eight weeks at that time. So, um, you know, he has a, a pattern of doing this to me continuously, like holding them from me. And I'll file violation, violation after violation, which I've done to this point because like I said, my kids ran away on October seventh of twenty twenty. The last time I saw them was October fourth of twenty twenty. And, um, I've filed violations and they gave me a court date for March. And my attorney, um, put in, uh, put in paperwork to Anthony McGinty and he would not give me a sooner date. So I just want to say, um, the next day, my children, when my son ran away actually on October seventh, when they were running down the road at ten thirty, their dad was asleep, they waited till he fell asleep. They ran down the street and they call, he called the state police. A state police officer picked my son up and brought him to a McDonald's and sat in a McDonald's with him. And they called me, my son called me, not even a police officer. And they were crying, they were screaming and I was like, I, I, I was, I didn't, I was just like in shock. I didn't know what to do, I didn't know what to say and I didn't, I, I couldn't leave because I had my two babies here sleeping and I'm a single mom. I, I, I just, so I called my mom and she went to where they were. And, and I did get on the phone, I asked my son if I could talk to the state police officer and he said to me, ma'am, his exact words were, um, we're well aware. He said, I called Sardegis police and they're well aware of the situation. And he told me that the Sardegis police officer was on their way because I asked him why they were sitting at a McDonald's instead of at a police barracks, a strip of barracks. And, and I said, well, my, my son didn't call the Sardegis police. And I said, what do you mean they're well aware? What does that mean? Like, I hadn't had contact with Sardegis police in, in over a year because I, of what they did, they, because of them, you know, um, saying they were going to arrest me for kidnapping. So I tried to stay close with their dad. Mind you, in the process of all this, he's a sick person, so he'll try to, what he does is he'll text me and say he wants naked photos of me and I could keep my children for, for a whole weekend or, you know, he, he wants sex or like to bribe me to try to, or to keep my kids from me. And he's done this to me for the past seven years that I've come through hell, my kids and I have, have, have come through this because Judge Anthony McGinty will not believe anything that I say.
Oh, he bel, he believes it, he believes it, he just gets his rocks off on it. He believes everything, he knows. The, the paperwork itself and the criminal activity and the criminal convictions are evidence enough to him.
The, the first time that he told me that his dad was hitting him and the police, um, they said that they were going to arrest me, I, I wrote a nine page detailed petition. I mean, very detailed on what he's doing, to be, their father is doing. And, um, I asked for emergency custody and I said, and if not, would you please grant my son and no, or grant a no harassment order of protection to be put in place to protect my son? I sat in that courthouse for two hours and then his, um, clerk came out and said, um, Ms. Mayor, he is not granting anything and you will get a date in the mail. And my son's father tortured him when he got that, that petition. He, he made my son sit at the table and told him he was going to read it when he walked in from school. And my son said, no, I'm not reading it. And he said, yes, you are. And then he smacked him and he made him sit on his bed from six P M. at night till the next morning. And he takes my son's phone every night and he turns the wife's play off on him. So he can't call anybody because he, he beats on them. So anyway, I just want to say the next day after my kids ran away, I'm sorry, I'm all over the place, but I, I'm, I'm just traumatized by all of this, like it's been, this is horrible for me. And the next day after they ran away on October eighth, um, the Sardegis intervened, obviously, they, they took over and, um, their officer who, um, he's been employed by the Sardegis police and he's harassed me for years. I've never been arrested or any of that, but he just doesn't like me or my older brother for some reason. His name is Ryan Hampel. He is now, he works for, he's like, I guess, would you want to say loaned out? I don't know what I have to put it, but he, he's fully employed, like full time employed by, a full time officer for Sardegis, but he works for the Children's Advocacy Center. So him and, um, his investigative, he was, he's an investigative caseworker, um, Timothy Grisbell, they showed up to my mother's house because my mother took the kids home. And, um, you know, they told her to be at the Sardegis police station at one P M. to be interviewed. Meanwhile, nobody called me, nobody told me to be there. My, my son called me to tell me this. So, um, I, I went there with my two youngest children and, you know, my daughter was interviewed or my son was interviewed, my little girl was interviewed. Oh, and that night, I, I have to, oh my God, I'm leaving out something terribly, terrible, terrible. Like my little girl, for the first time that night, told me that her dad has been sexually abusing her, what she was accused of in two thousand and seventeen with his youngest sister because she came out and told how she's been, how her dad, her brother and his, they, because she has, my children have three aunts, their dad has three sisters. And, um, the youngest one came forward in two thousand and seventeen and said that she was molested by her brother and her two older sisters. And, um, there was a major investigation with the family unit, you know, the, which is made up of the, the state police and the DA's office and sheriffs and CPS and all that. So, you know, they called me down and they told me basically that, you know, their father would not talk and they couldn't get him to, and that they, um, they had to close the case. So they closed it. So, you know, there were things that happened over the years and I made report after report because, I mean, my little girl, there's things I don't want to say, but they, they never, they just always closed the cases. So when she came out and told me those words that night, like, she asked my mom if she could talk to me in private. And I said, you don't have to ask, I said, you don't have to ask, babe, you can talk to me and tell me anything. And I knew what she was going to tell me and she started to tell me. I felt like something just hit me in my chest, I couldn't breathe. And I said, Mom, take the phone because I can't hear anymore. I mean, not that one now, not that one is worse than the other, but just, just hearing her tell me any of that, like my worst fears came true. And anyway, the next day after we were interviewed, Detective Hampel pulled us, me and my mom, to take my children to family court and file for emergency custody. And I said, on what basis? I have no arrest, I don't have any, I don't have any, um, you didn't write like my children's statements? I had nothing. Within twenty minutes of us leaving, my mother got a call first from the Sardegis police and then I got a call. Um, Detective Hampel called me and said to get back there or if we didn't bring the kids back there right away, that we were going to be charged with kidnapping. And I was like, what? Are you kidding me right now? Like, they didn't take pictures, they didn't, like, the, the, the room that they interviewed my children in was my mother's fiance's, I mean, he's the town, Sardegis building inspector, there's no cameras in there. Like, it, it was just all wrong from the start.
It's all backwards.
Now, yeah, so, um, the case was closed on December fifteenth. I got a letter in the mail dated December fifteenth and, um, Now, yeah, so, um, the case was closed on December fifteen, I got a letter in the mail dated December fifteen, and um, it stated that, I, I don't know, I'm so confused, because I, I don't know if, I wasn't named in the report, my, my, I mean, unless they named me, I don't know, but my children didn't say anything about me. I've never abused them, I've never hurt them, I never would, they want to live with me, these means is very clear. My, my daughter asked for, my, my ten-year-old daughter asked for a, she wanted a stay-away order to be placed on her dad and her aunt, because, you know, he sends my children to the, the aunt's house all the time, they're, they're with their aunt, like, four days out of the week sometimes, like, so she, she, and she smacked my daughter before, so she, she hates them, she said she doesn't want her name, her last, she wants her last name changed, like, you know, my kids are just being put through hell, and these people handed, this, this, this investigator, Hampel, not detective, handed my children right back over to their father, that, that next day, October eighth of twenty twenty, after they ran away. And ever since then, um, you know, I, I, I was interviewed, and I gave, I told him every single thing. I mean, my little girl, my little boy told him everything too, how he hides the food on them, he doesn't let my son shower, I mean, just everything. And now, it was closed, and here we are, almost four months later, I haven't seen my children, and I got a call last Friday, I was warned out for my arrest, because Detective Hampel from the Children's Advocacy Center filed charges on me for endangering the welfare of, for me. I just, I just don't understand.
None of it makes, none of it makes any sense, none of it, nothing that has anything to do with Anthony McGinty will ever make any sense. And that's why we have to have this, you know, we have to have him impeached, and then we have to have him held accountable for these crimes. And if the, if, I mean, I could be, we could literally be here, we have a couple more testimonies, um, and thank you so much, Deidre.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
No, you're fine, T. Deidre, you did a wonderful job. I just want to say that we could be here for hours and hours, and days and days and days, if I brought in all the victims of McGinty, and any logical person that's watching this, that sees this, um, can see that our proposals to the Senator to have him impeached off that bench, and to have the executive order for the New York State Judicial Reinvention Committee are what's, need to be the top priority in our state of New York right now, um, because obviously, this is ongoing, and right now, current abuse of children, thanks to Anthony McGinty, and of course, other judges. Uh, uh, and Deidre, I'm gonna have to, you're gonna have to yield right now to the next speaker, which I believe is a grandmother now, Fran, F. F. L. F. L., are you ready for your three-minute?
Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Um, well, the incident that I wanted to talk about, um, somewhat and describe it, um, is something that happened to my grandson. Um, it is a sexual abuse in nature, but I'm gonna have to go back a little bit to kind of the beginning, because when I hear all of the other ladies, and God bless them, and I am so proud of them, and their testimonies, for giving the testimonies, nothing makes sense, but to me, what I see is that it doesn't matter particularly, there's no rhyme or reason to it. It's basically vendetta-based, I think, this family court, these family courts, especially up here, from New York City on up, that's why they have a F. rating in New York State. Probably, that's the lowest rating across the country. They abused the system in New York, everything is, you can go to a police officer about a crime, and they direct you to the family court, because you're in a family situation, with these individuals have had a baby with them, not have, and are, you know, even ever had to necessarily have been married, um, or related somehow, or, you know, past relationship. Um, C P S is a very, very big, um, influence in family court. You've got the police officers, I know a little bit about some of the ladies' testimonies, and they can't understand why they've gone through what they've gone through, and you know, when we've heard a little bit more behind the scenes, the common denominator that I see is piss somebody off in these, um, areas, not even the court, first, before you get to the court, it could be police officers, um, or like one of the ladies said, or more than one, they just don't like them for some reason, they could have known you from school, they could have known you from your childhood, um, C P S workers, you know, and in my case, the abuse that happened to my grandson and daughter as his mother trying to protect them, and then I was involved in that, um, stems all the way back to twenty-three years ago, to nineteen ninety-seven, but it really kind of started in ninety-eight. Um, my, um, crime, and it wasn't a crime, I'm just saying that kind of facetiously, although that's not the best word to use, um. We, I'm from Poughkeepsie, New York, I grew up in Duchess County, but I had, um, I was lucky enough to get married and, and had a, you know, middle-class life and a beautiful home in another state out west. So, I, my husband and I broke, broke up, and he was abusive, I also come from an abusive background. Um, so, I tend to go with those type of men, but we had a very nice, middle-class lifestyle, of course, financial-wise. So, we escaped, we came back to New York, our marriage broke up, my children and I came back to New York, to my roots, wanted to be around family. Well, um, unbeknownst to me, my dad apparently had a lot of money, I mean, a lot, you know, for, for today's world, you know, a lot of people aren't able to leave their kids' large inheritances, you know, but somehow, my dad saved a lot of money, and he was saving it for his kids, and apparently, these Duchess County workers got a wind of it, and I believe it might have been through the police department, or they got people at the bank, you know, they, they get people to bend the rules, break the rules, we see all the corruption that's going on and lawbreaking, so, you know, they, these kind of people, they think that they're above the law, so somehow, they found out my bro, my, uh, father's inherit, my father's large estate, and an unfortunate incident happened to my daughter, very bad, um. She was improperly touched, and I reported it like any good mother would immediately. I had four children, mind you, the youngest being seventeen months old, the oldest was at the time about eleven, no, twelve. And so I reported it, we went in the system because of this supposed crime, and went to the Gray Smith House. Net, my daughter, the victim, never got one day of individual therapy for something, you know, they, they brand things sexual in nature, improper touching, or things like that, on the scale, it was lower on the end of the scale, uh, but, or on the scale, but it necessitated, you know, it rose to the level that we needed to get, uh, you know, Gray Smith. Um, they do things just to make it appear like they're doing what they're supposed to be doing. I was so new to the system, I never had any C P S reports, I didn't even know how this worked. Anything they told me at the time, I abided, and willingly, and, you know, very, just, you know, I was taught, you just obey your, the authorities, and so, I just listened, they, they assigned a male worker, a male C P S worker, to a little girl who had a sexual incident. Related, sexual-related, um, we never, like I said, got any therapy, we're in the system, they did everything they could over the years, we never got one housing, uh, paid for, like, security, no housing assistance, they even threw out my children out of public school, saying we were not in the district, and my youngest son was five years old. They waited till his fifth birthday, because they knew what they were doing, because if you throw out a four-year-old who started kindergarten, because he's four still, that would have different ramifications that fall under even, like, head start. They would have head start turn me away, they had C P S E evaluations, like, the meetings that I called for a younger three-year-old, for getting help, I said, we're getting abused, like, I, you know, he's living in abuse, we're living with an alcoholic, and they all said, no, there's nothing we could do. So, for years and years, this went on, so fast forward, we, we lived by a neighbor, and I had reported an incident that a little girl told me about, a man, a thirteen-year-old bothered her, who was eight years old, the little girl, and she told me and one of my children. So, I had to wait till I moved, I made the report, Duchess County C P S apparently never did anything about that, no remedial remedies at all, as far as I am, um, as far as the information that I have and believe. Um, fast forward, my daughter ends up meeting this person at, when she got older, and I'm getting to the what happened in Anthony McGinty's court, so they ended up having a child together, I, I was against my better judgment, or, you know, my wishes, but I knew that my daughter was an adult. But I, as soon as she told me she had met so-and-so again and met up with him, I, I thought, oh goodness, I remember, you know, uh, how he was just a cocky, younger kid. Um, the thing is, this incident that I reported ties into what happened to my grandson, because now, it was repeated on my grandson, but even at a higher level, because it was considered sexual abuse of my grandson, although it wasn't full-fledged, okay, full-fledged, and, um, so, the way my daughter was treated in this system, uh, in, in this matter, was so traumatizing for her, and so hard for me to look at her as a good mother, and looking on, and a good grandmother, I know what we went through, they tried to set us up for failure, all my kids are overall doing pretty well, you know, and they have good jobs and so forth, and, and as far as mothers, excellent mothers, so conscientious and, and all of that, and you know, their kids love them, they have good, normal relationships with their children. Well, this was, what they tried to do was turn it around on my daughter, and we didn't realize it quite so much at the time. And I know people that are even C P S workers, and they did, said, we would never want to work in Duchess County, they were offered jobs, they said, oh, it's so disgusting and how they treat people, and they turn things around, and they twist children's, you know, um, statements around, and so forth, and so on, so. Anyway, they taped the children, and then we don't even feel, we don't believe that they taped the, the victim and his other siblings. Um, so they did it two separate sessions, she wanted to go in, because she never knew, you know, anything about something like this, into the sessions, and they said, oh, no, no, you can't go, and believe me, we're on your side, we believe in your son, what he said. They believed what he said, but the way they treated her in court was just like the same, you know, echoing, a lot of the same stuff we're hearing, but basically, you know, when you're going through it, you're so traumatized, and it's like, when everything settles, and the smoke settles, and the dust settles, you realize, my God, I was just so badly abused, I was revictimised, um, or if you're a mother or a grandmother looking on, the same thing, you realize how badly abused your child was, and your grandchild, um, in, in our particular situation. I mean, everything possible, like, I'll tell you, compared to the other victims, i- it's not as blatant, but it's like, well, it is blatant, what he did, I'll just hurry up and fast forward. Um, from the time she filed in Ulster County Family Court, the child told her something, uh, my daughter went to the father, and he said, oh, I'll look at the tapes. Now, mind you, this is a past abuser to her who dragged her at eight, like, nine months pregnant with that child, down a flight of stairs. He never even got probation, as far as we know, they get probation for people for looking at somebody the wrong way in Duchess County, because they love putting people on probation, especially for three to five years, they generate money and all that. But for this incident, because it was my daughter who was the victim, he didn't have any probation, so he was treated favorably, is the best way I can describe it, not the child, victim, and I'm talking about the father. The father who allowed, who, who, whose child, whose older child, double the age my grandson, who was four years old at the time, so the other kid was, you know, obviously, eight. And, you know, knew how to do this, they had the nerve to call it sex play, Duchess County C P S, oh, it was sex play, kids get a hold of the electronics, and they can go out of sight, and they can see things and stuff, but if it's somebody they don't like, you can best believe, you could, you will even lose your kids for something like that. My daughter would never, I mean, she's taken care to not expose her children like any good parent will, will do, and these kids never saw anything of the like of, where did they learn the sexual assault, it all, you know, how to do certain things. I mean, the legislator I called had said the same thing, um, to me, one of the ones we had reached out for help before we got to this position that we're in, um, before we came to this position, and we've tried, Lord knows, to reach out to everyone. Um, you know, and, and so, basically, like I said, Judge McGinty with her, it wasn't like he was trying to not be so blatant about it. But, and then after you got his orders, you realize, oh my God, he really violated her and the child. So, in order, they did never gave this man, the father, any supervised visitation. I even had consulted with an attorney in Poughkeepsie, and he told me when it first happened, and he said, oh, well, this is what will happen, I can't take the case, I'm too busy, but they're going to give him supervised visitation. He never got supervised visitation, they took his visitation away for a, a, a little while, I think, a couple of months, but after a few months, he was back at, he was right away getting four, I forget if it was four or five hours of visitation, um, but it was definitely one of the two, um, with his abusive new wife that he married, eighteen years old, and he's thirty. Um, right away, married her, um, after a short relationship, and so they were out in a public place, Judge McGinty's orders were that he could see, the father can see this child out in public, uh, for these four or five hours, every Sunday, and um, she, he did not have to advise the mother where they were going, imagine your child got sexually assaulted of some kind, even if it's, you know, well, I'm not going to say how intense, you know, but thank God it wasn't, um, but it's bad enough, because what's it going to be next time?
That's right.
So, that's right, and we know, like Francesca and I have discussed, and any person with even the small, with any education, even with just common sense, children that are abused sexually even by other children are, A, most likely, highly likely, the statistics must be, the, the evidence, I should say, the data would say that they most likely was abused themselves, or experienced it at some point in time, and they're rearing at some point. Um, or, a- and another thing is, they, you know what it is, they tried to downplay this, because it was a child upon a child. So, that's how they got off with, like, you know, like, if it was a, an adult doing it, well, now I'm seeing the other, these other cases, I mean, these allegations of even parents doing it, and they don't care, but, um, you know, it, it's, it was just a horrible experience, so he gets five hours, four to five hours he had gotten, initially, right off the bat, after only about a few months of no, of no visitation. And they purposely didn't give him supervised visitation, um, and before you know it, within a couple of months more after that, um, he said that the child could go, uh, to, and then when he had the public visitations, um, the order said, you know, the child always has to be in his eyes view, that the father's eyes view, and then the other child, the perpetrator, could not be around this child. Because the child even told the P H D. that who was doing those basically unlawful sessions, where they were trying, what they were trying to do was blame it on my daughter, but they couldn't get that. Two separate sessions with children from the age of ten down to two, what did they bring in, a little two-year-old little girl in, a baby, into sessions like that? You know, and they still, and then the C P S worker, Carolene Johnson, um, Carolene Johnson had the nerve to call up my daughter, we got it, proof of it, and my daughter, her husband, and me heard her say, well, Judge so-and-so in Poughkeepsie, in Duchess County, because it was, it went back and forth because of the fiasco. I'm jumping around, but they, they, they trapped my, they tricked my daughter into withdrawing the petition. And that man raced over to Duchess County the same day, and I told my daughter, I said, I know he's going to Duchess County, they want him to have the control, the upper hand. The father who has, whose child molested, you know, sexually assaulted his own sibling, uh, sibling, um, you know, he has to have the upper hand, because they don't like us, it goes back to an old vendetta over money, jealousy, C P S workers, and believe me, I've written all kinds of letters to C P S.
So, F., I just have one quick question before we move on to the next person, how old is the, um, child that molested the grandson, how old was that child?
Double my grandson's age, at the time, my grandson was four, he's now about, like, he just turned six, and the other kid was eight, so now he's ten about. And, um, you know, the only therapy that they ever ordered either child is, um, you know, like, a fifty-minute type therapy, even the perpetrator. So now, it's, 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 it's elevated to overnight. Here's, there's these good mothers taking and ripped from the bond of their children, but here a father who's abusive, and has, you know, like I said, he even abused my daughter, like, at nine months pregnant, pulling her down, down the stairs by her hair. Um, involved in court, you know, in, in Hyde Park for six months or so, but as far as we know, he, he certainly wasn't on any three-year probation, like they do for minor infractions, because of the tie with us, like, I'll tell you, there, there's a common denominator. If anyone's done anything to my, my daughters or I, like, now they're, they're adults, and they've had a few abusive relationships, uh, duh, you know, they never got us any therapy, you tend to go with what you see growing up, right? I mean, the therapist can, you know, any doctor, the, the psychiatric data will, will, you know, definitely attest to that. Um, so they want, they definitely set up, like, I've written papers and things on even your page, like, these, um, I'm not good at speaking, because I get, I mean, I can be, but the anxiety kind of, you know, overwhelms me a little bit, but, um, it, it was just horrendous, so like I said, he's now up to regular visitation, oh, and this is the other clincher, that's why he is very abusive, this judge, he's mentally and psychologically abusive, and physically, you know, a, a danger, poses danger to women and children. He's mentally and psychologically abusive and physically, you know, a danger, poses danger to women and children and, you know, people of protected classes and probably even good fathers. My daughter gets the liberty and the duty to drive her child over to his father's house half an hour away. Half an hour away. She has to drive him to the visit. So it's as if to say, you know what? They're sending a message clear to me. My daughter's so traumatized, she doesn't see it. She's a good mother, but when it comes to this kind of stuff, it's like I can't even talk to her about it much because it's too raw still, you know? And she just does what she needs to do. I've had friends of mine who, like I said, even CPS workers who've done it in other states and stuff and even worked at Dutchess County Court and had to quit being supervised facilitators because of all the garbage that they saw. And got, had the nerve, they had the nerve to offer my friend a job with Dutchess County CPS. She said, she told me just like this, you know, "Hell, no would I ever want to work for them. They are so corrupt." But the way they run things. But yeah, so she has to drive the child. And my friend said, "Well, why didn't she speak up in court?" I said, "You don't understand. She's traumatized." She's traumatized from when she was younger and she doesn't want to rock the boat and she's afraid of them. They, they, that's how they get these women, you know, they're afraid of them and all that.
It's called battered woman syndrome and I have to move on to the next one because we have limited time. Thank you so much for your testimony. It was excellent. I have to move on to AA grandmother as well. If you're still here, because we're pushing three hours. AA, are you still here? Okay, hold on one second. Yeah, we're pushing three hours. Oh, is AA still here? Someone just came in. Yeah, AA's here. She does, hold on a minute. I think I have to unmute her. That's the problem. You need to, AA, you could unmute yourself. And you can speak up. AA, if you could unmute yourself. Sorry. All right, I'm going to unmute everyone. Just be quiet for a moment so we don't get too much background new. If AA could unmute herself? Then we'll finish the testimony. She's muted.
Is that the one that called in on a regular phone?
Yeah. AA, if you could unmute yourself?
It's still showing muted.
I know.
Isn't that why you muted everybody?
Well, I muted for no background noise. If AA could unmute herself? Who came in as JSS? You're muted? Okay, so if AA can unmute herself, I'd like to get your testimony. All right, well, while I'm waiting for that, this was a special session today with Senator Michelle Hinchey, Chief of Staff Leah Goldman. It was today, Monday, January twenty-fifth, sponsored by gubernatorial candidate Derek Gibson. We want to continue to thank them for this amazing session. Co-session sponsoring Punished for Protecting Incorporated. If anybody needs help, you can reach out to me at punished, number four, beingaparent.com, especially if you're in New York State or if you've had to deal with Anthony McGinty. This is the New York State Judicial Reinvention Committee in which we are command, we are not requesting, actually, we're proposing to have him, to have him impeached by the Senate. And also to have the NYS, New York State Judicial Reinvention Committee as a executive order for the state of New York so that we can continue this process eliminating these judges that are absolutely foul. The way I look at it, and I'm going to kind of share. Oops, hang on a minute. I'm going to share, actually, okay, so we have her trying to come in. She's trying to come in to do this and I might have to take her testimony through a phone. I don't, it's going to disconnect me for a minute, everyone, if you just don't mind. Just give me one second. Okay, she got kicked off. She's trying to come back in so she can give her testimony. Hopefully she'll just call it back in if she realizes how to do it. So in the meantime, I'm just going to share a screen share here. You guys will be able to watch this on YouTube later. This is going to go to all the entire Ulster County Legislative Body and everybody else that's been involved or that has not actually been involved, I should say, that has kind of turned a blind eye. But anyway, I'll give you a little bit about my story. You guys that know me, I am Francesca Mato and I am the founder of this nonprofit organization, Punished for Protecting Incorporated. I wrote this book, if you can see it, I know it's a bit blurry. Sorry for that. Punished for Protecting the Injustice System of Family Court. And it was literally written about Anthony McGinty and yet he refused to recuse from my case and he continued to harass and abuse me and my son. And I spoke before the New York State Assembly, before millions of New Yorkers. You can kind of see that. That's on YouTube if you'd like to watch that. Before millions of New Yorkers, I, I spoke about Anthony McGinty and also I spoke about the statistics about, you know, CPS and Family Court and how I know that it's judges that are making the orders that are causing the child trafficking. There was no way you could get around what I said because I used their own statistics against them and everybody knows me for that. So just to tell you that, though many of you don't know what McGinty has done to my family. He continued to allow the father, and I sit here and I marvel when I listen to some of these other testimonies from people who tell me that they were not allowed to continue to, these mothers, these innocent mothers were not allowed to, they were not allowed to file, okay, for their rights, their actual rights. But yet he continued to allow my son's fifteen-page criminal father with repeated protection order violations, file and file and file. This man has been filing for thirteen years. Now, without showing his face, I'm going to kind of skip here, put my finger over that, if you guys can see. Once we get this screen cleared. This is my son's father's criminal history, which we have one on every single one of these fathers. And this is literally, if you can see, fifteen pages long. It has five felonies on it. I mean, it just goes on. I know it's blurry and I'm sorry. I don't want to show his face right now or name. But it just goes on and on and on, arrest after arrest after arrest after arrest, domestic violence and child abuse, you know, protection orders. And Anthony McGinty knew all about this, knows all about this. Let him continue to frivolously file after he got out of jail when Christian came home. Christian wants to be home. Christian is thirteen. He wants to be home like all these children. They're vocal about it. Anyway, the long story short, as you guys know, in twenty seventeen, well, in twenty seventeen, Anthony McGinty tried to put me in jail for sixty days. I don't even have a parking ticket like the rest of these women. I have a, I'm a professional. I have an amazing background, clean family support system, family, experts in my family. I mean, it goes, my family like literally go for decades of just a good, good family, okay? Children get raised healthy in our, in our family. They get raised properly in our family. They get provided for well in our family. There's, you know, no issues here. And victims can't get away from their, their abusers. So you've got strong women who have no problem leaving abusers. You have other women who have battered women syndrome who are afraid to leave their abusers. And you have women that are afraid to leave because of judges like Anthony McGinty who never let you actually leave. That's one of the main issues. They never, he never lets you actually leave. And then as you see here from all these testimonies, he continues to place the children with the abusers. And not only does he give the children the abuser, to the abusers, he completely eliminates the mothers. Well, in October of twenty twenty, because I missed a court date, it didn't matter that the father literally lost twenty jobs in twelve years. Pardon me, yeah, twenty jobs in twelve years. And there's a lot to the case. I didn't have an attorney at that time because I spent over two hundred thousand because of this particular case and what he did to us. He was told to recuse. Matter of fact, I think I read it here and if not, I'll read it again. I'll read it again actually because I have it here. And I am going to put AA in here. But I think I put it here, it says, you know, very clearly that a judge, if they even, if the most, if the most, you know, even a person that has nothing to do with the case can see that, actually, let me pull it up from here. It's easier. It can see that a judge appears to be biased, just appears to be biased. Let's just show you this. Should have it someplace. But even if a judge just appears to be biased, then that judge is supposed to recuse himself from the case, okay? That's New York State law. Thought I had it. But that's New York State law, okay? It's just the, the, the actual appearance of improprietary, just where they appear to be biased. And obviously, in my case, I'm very, very well-known. They, people, all of Ulster County knows exactly who I am. Ulster County Family Court very clearly knows who I am. The District Attorney's Office knows who I am. Everybody up and down the state of New York knows who I am and throughout the country knows who I am and what I do, okay? And McGinty knows very clearly that I wrote a book about him. It's not like nobody knows about it. It became a bestseller twice. I was on the cover of Punished, published magazine for being a bestselling author, okay? I didn't self-publish. I have an actual publicist with a, with a law firm that actually checks your work for credibility and truth and honesty and that it is a true story, okay? And so what does Anthony McGinty do in October of twenty twenty? Takes four hours of, all he had was four hours a week after jail and running from the law and felonies and you can't even imagine with the corruption that's gone on, and gave the father sole custody in a final order and threw me some breadcrumbs, okay? Now, my son has been here more than he's been there. He's been home seventy percent of the week. Doesn't want to be there, has been so vocal about it. Placed my child in a ghetto, okay? No kidding. Comes from a beautiful home, beautiful neighborhood. We've got, he's got the best life in the world. Endangered him now twice, harmed him now twice. And of course, we have experts on this call this evening and the Supreme Court attorneys that I spoke to all said this was an instant win case. They wanted my case because it's clear, cut retaliation. And I want to make this very clear. And this is for the other advocates that are a part of this group. Retaliation is a crime. Retaliation is a crime. Okay, and so these are not just the fact that we want this man impeached from that bench because that's obviously, that's a given. We need him removed. He should have been removed years ago. And we absolutely and most positively need this man removed from that bench. And that's why we have gone to Senator Michelle Hinchey. That's why we did this, and then obviously, like I said, we would have more and more and more families. We could literally probably go on for days and we are at three hours, so I'm just going to keep myself very short here. But we want, we want to go after him for the crimes, all the criminality of what he has done. As you guys have heard, like I said, there's a whole lot more where that came from. You, you have all heard the testimonies of what he has done. The blatant disrespect for families, the blatant disrespect for women and above all, children. The blatant and despicable circus act of that Ulster County Family Court. The diabolical treatment and inhumane and disgraceful treatment of the most precious victims that are currently being abused all over this country, but in Ulster County, New York. And then some outside of the county because he goes to Sullivan too. There will no longer be any blind eyes that hear this, see this anymore. And there will no longer be any more deaf ears that this will fall on. Because tonight, and I thank the women today, the people have finally gotten the voice they deserved. We have spoken before the senator, okay? We have spoken tonight with this wonderful man, gubernatorial, gubernatorial candidate, Derek Gibson, who is in full support of what we're doing and the media because this has been out on a press release. And we ask you, because I'm in Facebook jail, to spread this public video. We did not bring the attention to it for many reasons so that we would not be silenced. And now we ask you to take this video and public, make, give it to everybody you know. We will make sure that by morning, every media outlet will have it, every legislator, every senator, every assemblyman, everybody will have this, these testimonies, okay? And potentially, I can still get the one more testimony in here. Can try to get that final one in. Hold on a second. Before I wrap this, but you know what? I'm going to try to get that one testimony in, but I'm going to ask, is there anybody in this group, one of the experts or anyone that needs to say, Alana or Jillian? Did you want to say anything else before I try to get this last testimony in? Because you're going to lose Zoom when I call her in so she can, she can give her testimony.
I, I would like to say something.
Is that Gina? Yes, Gina, go.
One of the things that I wasn't able to say in my own testimony, most every one of these women have touched on pretty much every similar thing that has happened to me and my children.
Yes, yes. And that's the whole.
And that all these stories are so genuine, you can't make this stuff up. It's really hard to make up the stories that we are telling about our experience of losing the children that came out of our wombs. And that's all.
And, and the fact that I, I have spent years knowing and getting to know all of you and recent new people as well, okay? That there is absolutely no excuse for the damages that this man has done to families, to these children, ongoing abuse that's happening as we are doing this live video, as we are having this special session. This man has harmed decades worth of children, which the experts have made it very clear. This goes into the future generations and the ongoing effects to, as the educator spoke on, how it affects them reading, how it affects just everything. It has, he has destroyed lives. There is no way that he can get away with at this point what he has done now that we have made a public spectacle of him. And one of the things that I have put in here, and if I can find it in the, I'm trying to pinch this and if you can move up a little bit with this, Alana, if you can kind of bring it up to the part where, keep going up, up until I tell you, I think where the red is. I want to show this.
I just want to say something that as a, as somebody that also knows a lot of the people here, you know, all of you are amazing mothers. I've worked with a lot of parents, probably thousands of parents. And I just, if it's any hope, if it's any consolation whatsoever, all of the mothering and loving that you did with your children when you were with them, that is what has made it possible for them to weather this storm to some degree. And even our, the Melissa, who was the foster child, she spoke to that. And she spoke about the attachment and the love that mothers and children carry for one another, fathers and children have for one another. So we must never lose sight of that because all of you taught your children how to love, how to assert themselves, how to be good people, because you are. And that's the only thing that's going to get you and your children through this nightmare. I just wish that somebody.
Can I interject? I just want to, I want to end. There is no greater grief, okay, than mourning a child who was alive. Every mother who has ever birthed a child has been, was wired instinctively to protect that child. When you intervene and you put that much meddlesome trespassing, inhumane treatment against a mother versus her child, the damages are irreversible, okay? This is a maniac, a narcissistic maniac that has no end. He doesn't know right from wrong and if left to his own devices, you're going to have a lot more damages.
Okay, thank you so much. And I couldn't agree more. I'm going to let the last person, she just, she just came back on. I'm going to have AA, go ahead and give your testimony and then we're going to wrap it. gonna wrap it. AA is a grandmother.
I heard, I heard you all screaming for me, very loud, and I was unmuted, so I don't know what happened. We were just totally disconnected.
Okay, so if you can give your testimony about what you witnessed in court with, and his mannerism.
Okay, uh, I'm a grandmother, and, um, my daughter, uh, was having issues with Judge McGinty. And, um, this has been going on for thirteen years of our lives, uh, with Family Court. And, um, after listening to these other ladies speaking, I, I heard every single one of them. Everyone was similar, some were the same, some weren't. But what was the same was not the horror, because it was like listening to a horrible Hollywood horror story. Because what, the worst part was where, the way, there is no justice. It doesn't matter whether you're right, whatever the case is, when they're out to get you, when this man, who in my opinion is a demon, there's something mentally wrong with him, why he does these things. But you have no hope. That's all I can say. We were in court because my daughter was trying to avoid her son going to visitation unsupervised with the father, who was a drug addict, an alcoholic, in and out of jail for domestic violence, um, just a total mess. He had been, uh, in a car accident years back, which he caused. He was drunk driving. He, uh, there was a fatality in the other car. He told me this himself. And he was so brain damaged from the accident. He was in a coma for six to nine months. He had surgery on his brain. He was rendered blind in one eye, all scars on one side of his face. And, uh, he was lucky he was alive. And he continued with the drinking and the, um, his lifestyle. When my, uh, grandson was born, we had nothing but problems in and out of court with him constantly. My grandson now was, uh, about nine years old, not quite ten. It was 2017. And, um, my daughter was begging Judge McGinty to please not give him unsupervised visits because of his background. He was on a suspended license for almost seven years because of drinking. He was in and out of jail for domestic violence. He drove regardless with my grandson in the car. This judge didn't wanna hear anything. No matter what we told him, he just poo-pooed it away. He didn't give a darn. There was no interest in the well-being of this child or any other child. At one point, we find out that my grandson's father, brother, was not only a heroin addict, he was a heroin dealer. And my grandson was in his company constantly. Many times, the father would leave him to go do, to go purchase drugs or booze and leave him with his, his, uh, brother, who was flying high on drugs. And we find out that the brother is arrested for trying to sell heroin to an undercover narcotic agent. In Ulster County, they're called urgent. And there was nothing urgent about it, because he was arrested at the father, at the grandfather's home. Luckily, that day, my grandson wasn't there. That would have been double trauma for this child. He was arrested, he served five months in jail and was released. And that makes matters worse. The judge, Anthony McGinty, refused to ever give him supervised visits. And we would be on pins and needles till this child came home. And then he starts demanding, the father starts demanding overnight stays. At that point, we can't, we couldn't allow it. My grandson would become, would come home, uh, bratty. He would be nasty to my daughter. He would literally be brainwashed. His father would constantly talk to him and say bad things about my daughter, uh, to him all the time. My grandson's childhood was robbed from him. Every child to grow up healthy, to grow up secure, to grow up to become a reputable, uh, a person that lives a moral lifestyle is done by a healthy childhood, which my grandson and these other children of these other people that I was listening to have been robbed of that childhood. They've been denied a childhood. And we would have to work with him until his next visit. We would get him back. My daughter would work with him. He was in a clean home. He had his own room, toys, uh, growing up with good moral standards, only to go to his father, who never, by the way, had a home of his own. He either lived with his father, who was a drunk, or he lived with a sister who also drank, or he lived with some woman he picked up, who was desperate for a man, and she would support him. And my grandson would sleep on the floor overnight, uh, in, in the living room on a mattress, never had anything. CPS knew it, McGinty knew it, and he couldn't, he couldn't care less. Nothing bothered him, no matter what you told him, the things that we had gone through. He insisted on my grandson going on overnight stays to that house. So my daughter said to Judge McGinty that, you know, she can't allow it. She's got to protect her son. But she was punished for protecting, that's for, for protecting her child. And he decided to have her arrested for, for violating his mandated court order. And, uh, we were also made fun of by this.
Well, the arrest was what he claimed to be a contempt of court, which was all nonsense. But what happened when I, you were in, what I wanted to have the audience hear was what, how did he treat you as a woman and older than him?
I'm getting, I'm getting to that right now. Everybody else spoke for about a half hour to three minutes.
I know, they're supposed to go three minutes.
I know. And they were, I sat here from five o'clock, five fifteen to eight thirty-five, and listened to each and everyone. And my heart broke for each and every one of these women. It's just devastating. So here we are now, 2017, September 2017, and we're in court. We're a family as well. I'm very, uh, I, I, I've worked in, uh, four hospitals as a radiology transcriber. I, uh, I do a lot of, um, I do a lot of community service. I'm a volunteer. I belong with the fire department in my community. I raised two daughters that have never given me one ounce of trouble. Fran, my daughter Toni, and my son Richard, never did drugs, never even smoked a cigarette, let alone anything else. We are good people, and none of us, I can go back, I don't know how far into my family line, we're not criminals of any kind. We're a by-law abiding citizen. And I raised my children to be the same. I'm very proud of the three of them. I have grandchildren, uh, also college graduates, reputable people. And here we are, finding ourselves in this mess, in this corruption of Family Court. And here we are now, in court, because he was bound and determined, Judge Anthony McGinty, to arrest my daughter and put her in jail for ninety days.
Sixty. Calm it down, sixty.
When I walk, when I walked into, when I went into that courtroom, I am the type of person, I can speak in front of anybody. I've done so. I've given speeches with, with, with all my community service and things, uh, that I've, you know, I've done. And when you go into that courtroom with Judge McGinty, you get intimidated immediately because he has a vibe about him, his, his body language. You walk in there and after ten minutes, you know that you're done. You're done. No matter what, if you have a halo around your head, uh, you're not gonna get anywhere, because he is in charge. And that's the, what he projects to you, that no matter what you do, no matter what you say, you could be Mother Teresa, you're going down. And that's the kind of person he is. So he's very intimidating, and it takes a lot for anyone to intimidate me. And as things went on, it was a kangaroo court. No matter what was said, no matter what, there was no getting anywhere. And then all of a sudden, my daughter has to stand up while police officers put my daughter, who's never, never been in any trouble of any kind, she's standing up with handcuffs on her arms and her arms behind her back. I, 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 I couldn't, I couldn't believe what was happening. I said, oh my God, I can't get over where we are. And I started to cry. I wasn't sobbing, but I, I looked at him and he looked right at me, dead, dead on. And he said to me, and I said to him, oh my God, Judge McGinty, how could you do this? My daughter hasn't done anything but tried to protect her child. And you're giving this child, you're taking custody away from her and giving her, my grandson, to, to, to this man that's been in and out of jail, DWI, he yelled at me. He looked at me and he said, how dare you? How dare you speak to me in my courtroom like that? How dare you? He almost manifested into something with, you know, a pitchfork in horns. And I looked at him and he looked straight at me with dagger eyes and said to me, you better, you better apologize to me, or you're going to jail right along with her. And in that split second, I, everything, it's like when you're dying and your life falls in front of your face. I said, oh my God, I can't wind up going to jail too. That's all my family would need, that this seventy-year-old mother is in jail right along with my daughter. And I composed myself and I said to him, I apologize to you, Judge Anthony McGinty, and I apologize to the court, no, to your court. But I'm just very upset right now, seeing my daughter in handcuffs. And he, nothing, just like the other ladies were saying. They say he's heartless. No, he's not heartless. Uh, yes, he's heartless. He has no heart, nothing. He's got nothing human about this man, this man.
That's right.
And with that, he said, I'll accept your apology. And he said to the officer, get her out of my courtroom right now. And this officer was as sweet as could be. I looked at my daughter and I calmed myself. And he walked out with me. He was actually holding me by the arm. And he, just what he did was apologize to me. And I turned around and I said, how do you do this? How do you work for this? I can't believe that I'm in the United States. I think I'm on, in a dream. This can't be happening. And he says, it happens all the time. And I just looked at him. And we left and he kept saying, you're okay? Can I get you a glass of water? Are you sure you were right? And very, very nice. And, uh, when we got out into the parking lot after we left, the lawyer that was representing the father was outside. There were police officers out there. And they waited. And, and the father and his girlfriend, who by the way, whose house he was living in, because he can't afford to live anywhere on his own, never did. He's always living, never pays child support. I mean, a real piece of work, was grown up, was brought up in a, a home with nothing but alcohol and, uh, and, um, drug addiction. And they were dancing and doing a jig and saying, ha, ha, we won like a bunch of imbeciles, as we got into the car and left. And that's what my remembrance is of being in a family court system. It, it's, it's ridiculous. And by the way, the brother that was, um, arrested for trying to sell heroin, about a year later, he's dead from an overdose of heroin. So that's what we're dealing with. And that's the people that Mr. McGinty, because I can't even say judge, Mr. McGinty, the devil, that's the people that he puts children to raise. That's, that's what he does. I don't understand it, but I can tell you something. I spoke with, with Assemblyman Scatoro, Frank Scatoro.
Scartatos. Frank Scartatos. Not Scatoro, Scartatos.
I've known him for, Scartatos, Scartatos, yes. And we spoke several years ago, about four years ago. And he told me he has been fighting this between the, the, uh, broken system of Family Court CPS and foster care. He has been fighting this system for over fifty years. And tonight, I heard, and this is not the first time, a twenty-four-year-old adult, who was the product, when she was a little girl, of this corruption. When is it going to end? The stories are one right after the other, one worse than the other. Children are being destroyed. And yet, here we are. It's 2021, and the corruption, when, uh, when it comes to our children, our most precious commodity is our children and their futures. And nothing is being done. And I hope that, that that senator and that possible, uh, governor, that he might become governor of New York, he's got my vote. I hope they could do something, because I'll tell you the truth, it's got to be done. And I'm gonna tell you one real quick story, that I never realized this. Most people, if you tell them who have no involvement with Family Court, they don't know. They haven't been involved, they've been fortunate. They look at you when you tell them what you've been through. And I've had friends say to me, I've known you, Adrian, for sixty years of your life. And I know you're telling me the truth, but if I didn't know you, I think you were lying. Because come on, this is the United States of America. How could this be happening? But it is. It is. And I would feel the same way, to be perfectly honest with you. When I was a little girl of seven or eight years old, I lived on Staten Island. And I remember a family, uh, had two little children of their own and two little biracial children that were the foster care children. And the way the houses were, we were doing a barbecue in our backyard, and they were sitting in their backyard. We were right next to each other, that we could speak to them. And, um, the foster children had peanut butter and jelly sandwiches with a glass of water. I never forgot this. But I did actually forget it until this started happening, happening to me. And they had, uh, dessert, uh, their, their kids, their biological two children had the cheeseburgers and french fries. And they had milk, chocolate milk. And when it came time for the dessert, the biological kids had the, um, uh, ice cream for dessert. And the other kids had nothing. And according to them, there wasn't enough. My father, and I was a kid, I was eight years old, I really didn't realize what was going on, but it left an impression on me. And my father went in the house with my mother, and they came out with two big fat hot fudge sundaes with walnuts and, and a cherry on top, and brought it to the two biracial children and the two foster kids. And, uh, my father, I heard him arguing with the man, and I heard him say, if I hear you mistreat these kids, I'll have you arrested. And I remember that, as, I never remembered it until we started. And then all of a sudden, one day, it was like the light bulb. So look at how long I'm gonna be, seventy-seven years old, January twenty-eighth. And it came to my remembrance. How long this insanity has been going on?
That's right. That's true.
Enough is enough. I'm sick of it.
So I wanna thank you. Thank you for that. Thank you for that testimony. And it was sixty days he tried to put me in for. I was only there for thirty hours, but not ninety. I just wanna make, I just wanna clarify that part. But that's, but anyway, everyone, thank you so much. Thank everyone that's watching. Spread this like wildfire, everybody, because this is ver, this has been three and a half hours. Spread this like wildfire. Like I said, we are gonna be working very diligently now behind the scenes, making sure that the senator impeaches Judge Anthony McGinty. The testimonies are public for all to see. And I have a lot more where they came from. If you guys have another, you know, ten years, we can bring them out. And also, anybody else in the state of New York that wants to help us on this endeavor, it is the New York State Judicial Reinvention Committee, in which we are asking the senator to get us an executive order for up and down the state of New York. And we'd like to see the other states follow through, uh, with what we're doing. We can, we can assign, uh, committee members up, uh, into, into the different counties of New York State, because there are many more Anthony McGintys out there that are endangering child welfare. We are here to support you, Punished for Protecting Incorporated, and Punished, the number four, beingaparent.com. You can go to a contact form and you can, uh, you know, write to us. And we, we are here to help you with this new New York State Judicial Reinvention Committee. Uh, thank, thank everybody for being here. Thank you. Special thanks to Senator Michelle Hinchey, Chief of Staff Leah Goldman, and our precious, hopefully soon governor of the state of New York, Derek Gibson. We absolutely love you. Thank you for all that you're doing, because you're keeping your word. He's a man of his word. And that's what New York State needs. Thank you all for being here and have a good night.